The zoning board review is now in session. Tonight is the continued petition of the AP Enterprise LLC. Accessors map 2025 lots one, three, thirteen. And that's in District Commercial Residential 10, also known as Yowen Park landfill. Applicants here for a special use permit. Hearing originated or last heard on seven twenty twenty-three. Last witness for the applicant was a Melissa Hutchinson. Before we start, once again, kind of some requests and ground rules. Everyone will have the opportunity to speak if they would like. It may not be tonight. I can assure you this meeting will go at least one more night besides this. It may be for nothing more than the board to vote. It may be so everybody has the opportunity to speak. Also, please keep your comments to yourself. And please be respectful of others. There will be people in this audience or online that are in favor of this, and there will be people here that are opposed to this. Everybody has the right to their opinion and to the thing. And can you silence your cell phones, please? That includes us. Um, thank you. When we do get to a butters and interested parties, I can tell you how it's going to work. And that will be, I will take a butters that are directly living next to the property. Once they're done speaking, I will take a butters that own property next to the petition. And after that, I'll open it up to any interested party that wants to speak. Please speak factually, not under assumptions like, well, you know, it's full of arsenic down there. If you say it's full of arsenic, I'm going to ask for the report that shows it's full of arsenic. Okay, so please have facts, not speculation. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Venka. Okay, Mr. Venka, when we left off, you had just gotten done with Ms. Hutchinson.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Chairman, members of the board, and thank you for setting up this special meeting so that we could get through the rest of our witnesses and begin public comment. Um, I did want to note for the record that my client, Art Palmer, AP Enterprises, he has a medical issue and is here but participating via Zoom. If any of the board members have questions, we need to ask them about any point. He will be able to participate that way.
Okay, all righty.
Um, I'm just to orient the board, as noted earlier, we do have two. We've, we finished with Ms. Hutchinson, who I'm going to call back only because we submitted updated renderings. And just to say, these are updated renderings. It will be very brief.
Okay.
Um, and then we have two additional expert witnesses, and that is our traffic, traffic expert and our real estate expert. Since we met last in late July, we did submit, as I noted, the updated renderings. These were to depict the and be in line with the updated site plan. And that is the thirteen volleyball courts. So there's no soccer court that's depicted in addition to the thirteen beach volleyball courts, just thirteen beach volleyball courts. If there is a conversion, um, three of those beach volleyball courts will be taken up by one beach soccer court. So we submitted those. Ms. Hutchinson will sponsor them in a moment. We also submitted a supplemental traffic assessment that analyzed what the traffic impacts would be, uh, if any, using a four by four or eight-player scenario across thirteen courts. This was done to respond to the concerns of this board about whether there would be an exceedance of the two by two play. So we've calculated out the four by four, eight players across thirteen volleyball courts in a subsequent short traffic assessment.
Yes, Mr. Venka, could I correct you there? Because, um,
Yes.
Two by two and four by four was discussed. However, I do recall me asking Mr. Palmer that these are rented courts. If I rent a court and want to run six on six, I can.
Yes.
There's the potential for seventy-eight people to be playing simultaneously on those courts, not just twenty-six or, you know, fifty-two.
Understood, and that goes along with the four by four, along with our proposed limitation on the number of players, which would be at one hundred and four. That is using that four by four calculation. That doesn't mean that the courts will be limited to four by four. But if someone's using a court six by six, that's going to impact the other courts. That will be managed through a reservation system and enforced by onsite personnel. So that's our proposed restriction. So I think that's the just additional information we had provided subsequent to July twentieth. I'd like to call back if I might, Ms. Hutchinson, and ask if, Aaron, if you could put up the updated renderings. Two of the renderings were updated. I believe she was sworn in before. Does she need?
She was. She does not need to be sworn in again.
So there were six renderings previously, and two of those were aerial views. So the first two views, which were the aerials, basically now show that feature court, which is the larger court next to the temporary buildings. So we wanted to just make sure that the site plan, the traffic study were all in line. And so that's really the only thing that's changed in the aerial view. And if you go to the next slide, it's just a, a close-up view again where you can see that one larger feature court closer to the buildings, which was previously multiple courts.
And just to go to the, if you had a conversion of the, some of the beach volleyball courts into a soccer, beach soccer court, what would that take up in these quadrants depicted?
So you can see that the, the beach courts are arranged as threes. The sidewalks kind of depict them in these sandboxes. And so if one of those boxes that now includes three beach courts was converted, that would be one beach soccer field, beach soccer court.
Okay, and then as far as the other rendering submitted, they were not updated because they didn't need to be. They didn't depict this format. Is that correct?
Right. If, if you want to show the, the eye level perspectives, essentially what you would see does not, not change based on the configuration of the, the courts. So that the eye level perspective would stay the same.
And do you want to go through the, just are there two more off of that? One. And then the Park Avenue. And so those have not been changed. They remain as shown at the last meeting.
Exactly. Yep. The view from Park Ave would not be affected by the, the change in the rearrangement of the court.
Okay. Um, are there any questions for Ms. Hutchinson on the updated renderings?
Go ahead, Ms. Hutchinson. The, the sand areas that the courts are on, that, that'll be sand that's placed on top of the cap?
It's, it's actually part of the cap. But yes, there'll, there'll be additional sand from what is there now that will complete the cap. So it'll be another, you know, couple feet of sand, new sand on top of that.
So that means the cap will be a few feet thicker than the DEM requires?
Well, I'd like to have Audi clarify because he's, he's the expert in that.
Basically, I was wondering, were, were you digging into the cap to put in sand? Were you putting sand on top of the cap?
No, we won't be.
The ladder.
Yeah, we won't be digging down. We'll be adding up.
Okay, and then, and then on your rendering, it shows great sort of plant. It, it looks like grass. Is the intent to have seeded areas around the, uh, the sand areas? If you go back one or two, um, uh, go back one more, please. One more. All that green, is that going to be grass?
So essentially, it's going to be vegetated, so it will be green, but it's not intended to be manicured lawn. So it'll, it'll be maintained in the fact that it's not going to be complete overgrowth. But it's going to be natural green material.
Okay, so it'll be the weeds or whatever kind of wants to grow there.
Yep, indigenous vegetative buffer.
Okay, and then, uh, your, your, your application talks about using the, uh, grass for additional parking. So your plan is to have cars drive onto the cap, onto this, uh, green material?
So, so if I could answer that, I don't think Ms. Hutchinson can. But, uh, in the operational plan, there was an indication that there's room for overflow parking. But we will, as I just discussed, we are proposing a restriction on the number of players. Um, and we have an analysis of the parking ordinance such that we will not use overflow parking. And we don't need off-site parking, so that, that will not be used.
Okay, so your, your operational plan, the, the artifact that you submitted can be considered amended to eliminate the section that talks about parking off of the parking area?
Yes, and I anticipate that, um, if, if we do get approved with conditions, if that happens, that we would probably be amending the operational plan to be consistent with any conditions that are arrived at by the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd next like to call our traffic expert, Mr. Todd Brayton. Uh, oh, I forgot to mention that with our supplement, we, um, we did provide a copy of Mr. Brayton's resume. I just want to confirm that, uh, the board has that. If not, I have. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Um, I think Mr. Brayton needs to be sworn in.
He does. Raise your right hand so we can tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address for, uh, Teresa, please.
Todd Brayton, offices at six forty George Washington Highway in Lincoln, Rhode Island.
Mr. Brayton, are you employed?
Yes, I am.
Where?
Bryant Associates.
Okay, and what's your title there?
I am the Director of Operations as well as the Transportation Director.
Okay, and can you describe in a little more detail for this board what that means? What do those titles mean? What do you do?
Yeah, so it pretty much means that, um, it's actually in terms of this case, the Transportation Director is, I'm responsible for all of our projects company-wide that deal with transportation-related, um, projects.
Okay. And for how long have you been working on these types of matters for Bryant Associates?
Uh, for about twenty-four years.
Okay, and, um, did you work any place before that?
Um, I did work for a short time at another firm, yes.
Okay, but that's the bulk of your work experience. Okay. Um, and do you hold any professional licenses or certifications? And if you do, could you describe it for the board?
Yes, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island.
Okay, and what would be your, uh, post-high school education? Describe that, please, for the board.
So I have a bachelor's degree in civil and environmental engineering from the University of Rhode Island, as well as a master's degree in civil and environmental engineering with an emphasis on transportation engineering.
Okay, and do you belong to any associations, professional associations or societies?
Yes.
And what are those?
The one by most relevant to this is the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to hand to you a copy of, um, what looks to be your resume. Can you just confirm that this is your resume that sets forth what you just described as far as your background, education, experience, and, um, and professional licenses?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and, uh, could I have this marked or is it already marked as an?
It's already been submitted, so it doesn't need to be.
Okay, great. Um, and, um, I would ask then, I'd move to have Mr. Brayton, uh, recognized as an expert in, uh, traffic engineering.
Chairman, I move to have Mr. Brayton recognized as an expert in traffic?
I'll second the discussion. I would second it as an expert in transportation engineering versus traffic expert.
Very good. I agree. Okay. Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brayton, did you visit the property that's the subject of this application?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and when was that?
Uh, that was, I believe, on, uh, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
This past summer?
Yes.
Um, and did you also, uh, at that time of view Park Avenue and its, uh, traffic conditions?
Yes, I did.
Did you review the application that's the subject here tonight, including its supporting materials?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And after you made your observations, visited the site, looked at the, uh, Park Avenue, and reviewed the application, uh, did you prepare a report, a written report?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and does that report, uh, set forth certain opinions?
Yes, it does.
And what, um, opinions do you opine on in that report?
Uh, primarily on the site distance at the driveway and the anticipated trip generation of the development.
Okay. Um, and is that the report that's been submitted with the application dated July seventh, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, and what did you, let's start with this first about the site distance. What did you find as far as the site distance from the, uh, existing curb cut, the exit and entry to what would be this proposed facility?
Uh, so based on, uh, an assumed, uh, or in the conservative speed on the roadway, which was ten miles, uh, ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit, the site distance based on criteria in Ashto, uh, the Green Book, site distance would be met, um, for those requirements in both directions.
And, um, in layman's terms, does that mean that there's safe site distances?
Yeah, so it pretty much means to, if coming and going at the driveway, you can see and have no problem in terms of, uh, of not being able to see or, or something along those lines.
Okay, and you refer to a particular authority that you refer to. What is that authority?
It's a, it's the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. It's called the Green Book. Um, I'd have to actually look to see exactly what the title is. It's a, a policy on geometric design of highways and streets.
Okay, and, um, you just looked at something. Is that your July seventh report?
Yes, it is.
All right, and do you use, um, this authority, uh, commonly, uh, when you evaluate, um, site distances for projects?
Yes.
Do you evaluate site distances for projects frequently?
Yes, I do.
Um, and then, uh, the, the other area of your initial report was on the, uh, anticipated trip generation associated with the proposed use, uses at the facility, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and can you tell me about, in this original report, the July seventh report, what assumptions you made about the number of players?
Um, so we, we used, uh, the IT manual. Um, unfortunately, the, the IT manual does not have a use for volleyball courts, either beach volleyball or any kind of volleyball courts. So we looked at what was available and based on, uh, similarities, we decided to use the golf course land use code because it has typically four players and, and based on our initial analysis, it's also typically going to be four players on, on the volleyball court.
What is, um, in addition to just the raw number, so this is, I, you're assuming a two by two play, correct, on each court?
Yes.
So that's four per court for, uh, on a golf hole, if you will.
Exactly.
Okay, are there other similarities between the beach volleyball use and the golf use?
Well, um, they are, they are similar, obviously, because they, the four players and typical, um, I guess, just the way that, that they would be used because it's, obviously golf is different because they move from hole to hole, whereas in this likely to be on one court, but we, we feel like that is, is similar in that regard.
So is it, is it accurate that there would be, um, multiple foursomes playing simultaneously on a golf course, like there would be multiple foursomes across the thirteen beach volleyball courts?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and we, you referred to, uh, I don't know if you said I T E manual or just the manual, but can you describe for this board what that is?
So, uh, the IT trip generation manual is a document that's based on, um, thousands of studies that have been done across the country over the last number of years. And based on counts that are, or counts that are done by either developers or municipalities or, or traffic consultants, a lot of different, um, sources. It comes up with all this data, um, that, that is in the trip generation manual.
And the version that you are referring to in order to come up with your calculations, what version is that?
The eleventh edition.
And is that the most current?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Does the I T E manual, um, have data for, uh, tennis use?
It, it does have some limited data for, for tennis.
Why didn't you use it?
Because, uh, unlike the golf course that had the data for the different time periods, weekday, AM, weekday, PM, and Saturday, the tennis courts did not have that, um, the data, especially for the AM or the Saturday peak periods. So we felt that it wasn't, um, applicable to use because it didn't, didn't give us a full picture of what we'd be looking at.
Okay. Uh, just asking you about golf course use. Does a golf course from time to time have spectators?
Yes.
Okay, associated with golf tournaments?
Typically, yes.
Okay. Um, and does the I T E manual specifically mention spectators with respect to the golf use?
No, it does not.
Okay, does it mean that it wouldn't include that?
No.
It, it has a general description of what it includes?
Right.
Okay, so what did it, what does it describe as far as, um, the golf course and potential other ancillary uses?
Yeah, so it does mention, uh, because the golf course does have other uses such as, um, a clubhouse, a pro shop, a restaurant banquet facilities, um, that it does include that kind of, um, ancillary uses, um, for golf courses.
Uh, and can those ancillary uses generate more traffic?
Yes.
And are those ancillary uses proposed as part of this project?
No.
Uh, for the potential use of the three courts as a, as a beach soccer court, what did you look at as far as a use?
Uh, so that there's a soccer complex use in the IT trip generation that we use. Because, uh, beach soccer is not the same as, uh, regular grass field soccer or, or turf soccer, which is typically eleven, the eleven versus eleven. Beach soccer is typically five versus five, so we use that, um, that number of players for our trip generation for the soccer, um, court.
And so, um, for that use that you looked at in the I T E, um, manual, trip gener- trip generation?
Yes.
Okay. The, at the use is soccer complex, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and are there ancillary uses associated with the soccer complex?
Yes, there are.
What, what are those as described in the manual?
Uh, some of them can be trails, um, playgrounds, other courts, um, stuff, stuff like that. That you might find that a, at a kind of a, a big soccer type com- complex.
Does it mention basketball and tennis sports?
Yes.
Okay, um, and what about spectators? Does it include spectators?
Yes.
Um, and does this project propose those ancillary uses?
No, it does not.
Well, it, just to back you up, are some of the ones you just described, including spectators, incorporated into this project?
Yes.
Okay, spectators.
Spectators.
Okay. Um, and but with respect to those other ancillary uses, the project is not proposing them?
That's correct.
Um, so, uh, using the land codes that you just described, um, from the I T A, I T E traffic, uh, trip generation manual, what were your findings with respect to the trips that would be generated using a two by two beach volleyball scenario? And I want you to first talk about where it's all beach volleyball, and then next talk about where it's ten volleyball courts with one soccer court.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, so the first scenario is with just the thirteen beach volleyball courts, no soccer, um, in- involved in that. Um, so that for the, um, AM peak, um, on a weekday, there'd be twenty-three trips. PM peak, there'd be thirty-eight trips, and the Saturday peak, there'd be forty trips. The second scenario is looking at taking three of the vol- beach volleyball courts, converting it into a, a beach soccer court. So you'd be left with ten beach volleyball courts and the one soccer court. And the trip duration for that scenario is nineteen trips in the AM weekday peak, thirty-seven in the PM peak, and fifty on the Saturday peak. And that, uh, just clever, that's, that's the peak hour to AM peak hour, PM peak hour, Saturday peak hour, just over the course of one hour.
Uh, um, and just to back up, because I'm not sure I asked you, when you use the soccer complex, um, use code, did you half that?
Yes, so I, I kind of mentioned that earlier, um, because the typical soccer, soccer field is eleven versus eleven, and beach soccer is five versus five, we actually use half of the rate, um, that's in the IT trip generation manual.
Okay. Um, given, uh, that the use being proposed here does not include all those ancillary uses that you described for both the golf and the soccer complex, do you feel, uh, comfortable to a reasonable degree of, um, transportation certainty that the number of trip generations, um, that you came up with in your report is appropriate?
Yes.
Um, may it even be biased, um, to more traffic than would actually be generated?
It, it is possible since there are other uses in the golf course land use code that are not going to be found on our development. It's, it is possible, yes.
Okay. Uh, moving on now, uh, did you supplement your traffic assessment more recently?
Yes.
Okay, and is that in a letter to me dated August twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and we submitted that to the town, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and tell me what the purpose of that traffic assessment was?
Uh, so the purpose was, um, at, at your request, because and was also mentioned, um, a little bit at the last meeting, is that you might have more than just two V two on a court. You could have four, four V four, so eight total players on a court. So we wanted to kind of, uh, do that preparation under that scenario if all the courts were, um, eight players per court.
And, uh, did you, uh, come up with the trips that would be generated using that eight players per court scenario? And then again, under the thirteen beach volleyball courts and then alternatively, under the ten beach volleyball courts and one soccer court?
Yes.
Okay, can you, um, describe, uh, to the board the numbers that you came up with for your peak periods?
Uh, so again, the two different scenarios, the first one being the thirteen beach volleyball courts with no soccer use, forty-six trips in the AM peak hour on a weekday, seventy-six trips on the PM peak hour on a weekday, and seventy-nine trips on the Saturday peak hour. Then the second scenario, again, is looking at taking out three of the volleyball courts, placing with a soccer court. So you'd have ten, ten volleyball courts and one soccer court. Uh, the weekday AM peak would be thirty-six trips, the PM peak would be sixty-six trips, and the Saturday peak hour would be eighty trips.
Okay, based on your testimony so far and the, uh, trip generation under both the two by two and the four by four scenario, leaving the soccer to be the same, five by five, do you have an opinion as to the impact on traffic this facility would have?
Yeah, so based on all the analysis that we did, we do not feel that there'd be a significant increase in traffic from the development as proposed.
The maximum trip generation for a peak period using the four by four scenario, is that, uh, eighty?
Yes.
And that's during a weekend peak?
Yep.
Okay. What is the significance of that top number compared to when you would need to look more closely at traffic?
So typically, um, for a physical alteration per app, permit application, which would be required for this project because it is on a state road that's maintained by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, they would typically look at, look for a traffic study when you have a hundred or more, um, peak hour trips.
Okay. Um, and that, under the RIDE regulations, that would not be required because our max number doesn't reach that?
Yes.
Is that correct? Right. I, I'd now like to ask you about, uh, parking. You understand that this application is proposing one hundred parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
Um, and did you review the town, um, the staff report, um, that, uh, indicated that there's no required parking minimum for beach volleyball, because it's just not defined?
Yes.
In the ordinance, okay? And you saw that staff said that the most analogous use under the Portsmouth ordinance would be a tennis use. Is that correct?
Tennis slash racquetball, yes.
Tennis racquetball, okay. And did you, I asked you to review that, correct?
Yes.
That ordinance, and what does that ordinance require as far as numbers for parking?
Uh, so it requires two, um, parking spaces per court plus fifty percent additional.
Okay, and, uh, if we were to have Okay, and uh if we were to have. A four by four, again, this is the max where there's a hundred and four players, a four by four player scenario. Uh, what would be the parking calculation using the Portsmouth ordinance for tennis racquetball?
So that would be using twice of that that rate, which would end up being four spaces per court times thirteen. Uh, is uh fifty-two and then fifty percent more is twenty-six for a total of seventy-eight required spaces based on the tennis slash racquetball um use.
Um, so so as proposed of the, you know, one hundred parking spaces, would that be adequate? Given the analysis under the most analogous use of the Portsmouth ordinance?
Right, that would be uh it'd be twenty-two extra spaces compared to that um calculated number.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any further direct um with the board like to ask questions of Mr. Brayton.
Yep. Uh, I'm gonna go right to page three of your July seventh letter, um just to get this part out of the way. And I'll go down to the almost last paragraph where it says, it is our opinion that a full traffic study is not required, correct?
Yes.
Your opinion?
It's our opinion, yes.
Nobody asked the board if we needed one, just your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. Now, sometimes I miss things when I'm reading them, so you were there on June twenty-eighth.
Uh, yeah, let me just verify the um. Yes, June twenty-eighth, twenty.
From what time to what time?
Um, I was there in the afternoon.
What was the traffic count at the time?
I I didn't.
You didn't do a traffic count?
I didn't do a traffic count.
Okay, so what's the level of service down there?
We did not do capacity analysis.
So you have no idea what the level of service is, you didn't do a traffic count?
Was right.
But it probably wasn't that busy.
No, it was not.
No, because that's the week after school gets out, so there's no school buses. And it's not during the peak season, hasn't started. July is right around the corner. Why would you not have gone down there during the busier time of the year to at least observe? Number one, not number two, why would you not have done a traffic count? And given this board a level of service, that's what this board is used to, we don't care what D O T wants. It's, they may not require it, but we may want it, and that's how we determine whether traffic is an issue or not. Okay, I mean, I kept looking and looking, saying, okay, they were there, there must be a count here somewhere. And there isn't, so basically you just went down there, and that was it, in the in the middle of the week on a Wednesday in the afternoon. Okay, um. I'm trying to understand this proposed facility is anticipated to generate between thirty-six and eighty new trips. I'm gonna go by the four by four rule, which again, six by six can happen, there's nothing saying. Right now, that you couldn't have that many players on. I know what you're you've been saying is, well, the board could, the board's not here to manipulate your petition. It's what you proposed to us. Thirteen volleyball courts says legal players, six on six, that's what I go by, but I'll go by the four by four. That's a hundred and four people on there. Hundred and four people coming on, you know, hundred and four separate cars. Change over time, we rented it for two hours, the next group is coming in. How do you figure that there would only be thirty-six to eighty new trips? When these people are changing? That's a heck of a lot more than thirty-six or eighty, you got a hundred and four leaving and a hundred and four coming. They may not come all at once, they may not leave all at once, but at some point, you're gonna have that flow, let alone if it went up to a uh six V six. So how do you get to the thirty-six or eighty new trips? That's where I'm suffering with the math here.
So that, so the I T trip generation manual, again, like I mentioned earlier, is based on thousands of counts and that's. That's what is counted at things happen like this where there may be overlap between different times. Um, so it 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 would it would account for that in 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 the the numbers that we.
And we're just talking players, we're not even talking spectators that would probably arrive and come as well.
Right, so but we think that um, and it's and it's not not universal, of course, but I think a lot of the spectators would probably we be with the players either. If it was a youth um type setup, the parents would probably be driving them. Or if it was adults, either their spouses or whatever, their family members would be with them when they go to the to the facility.
So for the record, there's no trip generation report, correct?
Is uh.
There is no trip generation report.
Trip generation, yes.
But there is no traffic count.
We did not do traffic.
After a traffic count, and there's no recorded level of service. So you have no idea what the level of service, whether it's gonna go from an A to a B, a D to an F, you have no idea.
That's right.
Okay, and again, it was done on a Wednesday, June twenty-eighth. In the afternoon, when it's Wednesday, middle of the week, it was not done during peak season, which according to the applicant, peak season is during the summertime. Which would be July, August type.
Right, but again, when we did, when I did the field review, it was based on looking at the driveway, looking at site distance, which. Is the same whether you you do it in June or December, so we could, yeah, because we weren't doing traffic counts.
But based on that, even with the line of sight, if it's extremely busy, wouldn't that play into the level of service? As to what it could go from to?
It it could, but we, again, we.
But you didn't do the level of service, right? Okay, I'm done with my questions. I have a question, go ahead.
Uh, um, I may be re-asking what Mr. Not asked. Just because I'm not familiar with all the terminology, but but your opinion is that eighty trips is um. Uh, not a significant increase.
Yes.
And 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 that refers to eighty additional cars going on to Park Avenue?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you make that assessment without knowing how many cars are on Park Avenue?
Yeah, just be, yes, yes, because the number eighty trips is not a a high number of of trips, like for eighty in in one hour. Over the course of a sixty-minute period is not a lot of trips.
Okay, not a lot of trips for for any road? Uh, that I'm 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 I'm.
Well, it certainly would not be, Park Avenue is is a is is called an urban major collector, so I would say, yes, it would not be a major number, significant amount of traffic.
But you don't know how much traffic is on Park Avenue?
Not, yes, I I actually did try to get some counts from D O T, but the the only counts they had were further towards twenty-four and they were. Were were pretty old, so I didn't even bother reporting that, just because it's not relevant to this location, but.
So so so, so your assessment is based on not anything recorded for Park Avenue itself? It's more for that type of road or or um some kind of similar to?
Yes, I would say that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
I I will add one more thing that. The thirty-six to eighty, and and I'm going back to your letter again, however, if this had hit the one hundred sweet spot. Then our I D O T would have mandated traffic study, right? Twenty twenty more.
Yeah.
Would have mandated it.
It's 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 my impression or my um, to to my knowledge, just has not been submitted to R I dot yet, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
That's correct.
So they have not said one way or the other whether they would require a traffic study.
Okay.
Yet.
Questions? Kevin? We're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayton. I'd like to call uh Mr. Sweeney up.
Alrighty.
Mr. Sweeney is our final witness.
Those that are kind of talking in the back, we can kind of hear it up here, so if you could just please, thank you. Raise your hands where to tell the truth?
I do.
We'll name an address for Teresa, please.
Thomas, middle initial O, Sweeney, S W E E N E Y. Is this address, One Turks Head Place, Providence, Rhode Island.
Mr. Sweeney, where are you employed?
Uh, Sweeney Real Estate and Appraisal.
And is that your company?
It is.
Okay, and what do you do at the Sweeney Real Estate and Appraisal?
We are a uh full-service commercial and residential uh appraisal and brokerage firm.
Um, and what are you specifically, what is your role there?
Uh, I am the principal of the firm, uh, I've been involved in real estate for forty years. Uh, I am a licensed real estate broker in the state of Rhode Island, the state of Massachusetts, I'm a generally certified real estate appraiser. Since it came into inception in the state of Rhode Island. Can get into my qualifications.
Uh, yeah, well, we'll go through a couple more questions and you can add anything you'd like. Uh, do you hold any professional licenses or certifications?
Yes, as I said, I am a uh licensed broker in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and a certified general appraiser in Rhode Island. Uh, I'm a member of the uh Society of Industrial and Office Realtors, I am also a uh. National Association of Certified Real Estate Appraiser, member of that certified general appraiser there. That's my qualification, that's my licenses.
And what's your post-high school education?
I got a bachelor's of arts from Providence College, graduating in nineteen eighty-three. Uh, I have taken significant courses offered by the Appraisal Institute, Society of Real Estate Appraisers and the Appra- yes. And those two groups and numerous continuing education over the past thirty years.
And have you been qualified as um a real estate expert by this zoning board on prior applications?
I have, I was here, I believe, two months ago. Uh, and the board accepted my qualifications at that point and on other occasions prior to that.
Okay, and have you been qualified as a real estate expert by other? Zoning or municipal boards in the state of Rhode Island or Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Uh, I believe in every town, city and town in the state of Rhode Island, uh, the border towns in Massachusetts, uh, by all of the courts in the state of Rhode Island. Yes.
Thank you. Is your current resume attached to your uh real estate opinion report dated April thirteen, twenty-twenty-three?
It is.
Okay, and I would just refer the board members uh to that uh report, it's the last three pages. Um, and I um believe that it's probably already marked as an exhibit because it was part of the original application, is that?
That's correct.
Correct assumption, okay. Um, and I would like to now uh move to have Mr. Sweeney uh qualified by this board as a real estate expert.
Have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Most have been made in second to accept Mr. Thomas Sweeney as an expert in real estate appraisal, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, have you reviewed uh the site plan, application and uh related materials that are part of this special use permit process?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and did you visit the property uh that's being proposed for development?
Uh, yes, I did, I toured the property with the uh proponent, uh, I believe in April of this year.
Okay, and uh did you also visit and view uh Park Avenue and the surrounding properties surrounding of? The proposed um site, uh, project site?
Yeah, yes, I did, I drove in on Boyd Lane and drove, stopped at the property, but after that inspection, I did tour the neighborhood. All the way around into the residential area as well as the commercial area for the Down Park.
Okay, and did you prepare a written report? Um, that sets forth your opinion on the potential impact that this project might have on the neighborhood?
I did.
Okay. Um, and would you describe just the conclusion of that report?
Uh, my conclusion is, I was asked to give an opinion as to the appropriateness of the special use permit being uh permitted on this, given granted on this property. Uh, following the standards uh that are fo- set forth in the zoning ordinance. Uh, in a summary, uh, it's my opinion that this proposal does meet the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and could you um go into a detail as set forth uh in your April thirteen, twenty-twenty-three report? As to um the the facts as you viewed them that would support a finding of no significant adverse impact on the neighborhood?
Uh, the proposal here is uh a parcel of land on Park Avenue in the Island Park section of the town. Uh, across the street from uh the beaches, AKA the Secana River in the Atlantic Ocean. Um, I toured the area, it's approximately, the site, it's approximately fifty acre, fifteen acres of mixed zone property, commercial and residential. Uh, the proposed use is permitted uh within both zones uh via the special use permit that we're here for. Uh, based upon earlier testimony that the board has heard, uh, this application uh will be uh contained to the southern part of the site. Uh, it will consist of the developed area, which is thirteen sand volleyball courts, which can be reconfigured. Uh, and some temporary structures along with a uh stone one hundred car parking lot. There will be temporary facilities uh for uh tickets, bathrooms and storage. Uh, none of the area will be pervious, uh, excuse me, impervious, and uh there are no permanent structures on the site. Uh, again, that's been testified to, there will be perimeter fencing, uh, the way the site lays out itself and from the renderings can be seen. That uh for most of the properties, it will be somewhat buffered from uh. From the use as the volleyball courts. Uh, based upon that and the fact that this. Use, in my opinion, is a recreational use. Uh, there's been discussions about uh full impact of a hundred and four, I believe, participants. Um, that might happen, but it's not as if this this is an open, the Wild West, not all of a sudden a hundred and four people are going to show up here. Uh, this is a process uh proposed use that will be controlled by reservations. And staff will make sure that the number is the number that is being proposed. Uh, we're not looking at all of a sudden, again, a free-for-all, this is a recreational outdoor use with what I believe is sufficient parking. Uh, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm gonna say that based upon what I've heard the traffic engineer say, uh, the traffic will not. Be impacting, but I'm not a traffic person. Uh, based upon all of these things, it is, and a couple of other things, one, this is a seasonal use, it's going to go shoulder seasons. And middle uh, the June, July and August, uh, it it's only a daylight use. Uh, you're not going to have uh a hundred percent use, a hundred percent of the time, you're gonna have some up, some times where there will be full capacity. But for the most part, my opinion is this will be at half capacity to maybe sixty percent capacity uh in general. Um, based upon all of those things and the fact that there's no lighting, there's no music. Um, the the only things you're gonna hear is people competing, yelling, clapping, um, which I don't believe is uh regulated in the town. Um, I think that this use is appropriate uh based upon the uh. Fact that it is across the street from the beach, we're we're talking, we're calling it beach volleyball. Um, it's sand volleyball, it just happens to be a event created on the beach. Uh, in my opinion, is a compatible use to the uses in the area. Uh, the way the site is laid out and designed, there will be buffering from uh site views into the property from the adjacent properties. Um, furthermore, it is my opinion that the proposed residential use is fits in with a mixed use in the area. Uh, you have the residential uses to the. North or north and east, I believe, uh, but then you get on Park Avenue and it becomes much more mixed use with some commercial properties and the beach. Uh, it is my opinion that it's a low-impact use to the surrounding property and is suitable for this type of use. Uh, my opinion, it is will not create any inimical bo- can, excuse me, inimical conditions. It's needed that outdoor recreational use, yes, it is a private use, but it'll be a controlled private use. That will uh give the town a better use of an underutilized property. Finally, I do not believe that this use will have any negative impact on the surrounding property values.
Uh, I just want to ask you, uh, because you had created this report um at the, with our first submission of the application. Uh, the site plan did subsequently change to reduce the number of courts, there were initially thirteen beach volleyball plus one beach soccer. The current updated site plan is just thirteen uh beach soccer courts. Uh, does this updated site plan affect your opinion in any way?
No, it does not, the area shown on the renderings is the same area that was shown throughout this discussion in front of the board. The only thing that changed was how they made the little blocks inside, so it was set, it is based upon thirteen courts. But three of them will be eliminated for the soccer court, so that has no impact and it doesn't change my opinion whatsoever.
Uh, finally, are you aware that um some of the objectors submitted a real estate survey um that was prepared by a James Hool?
I am, and I've reviewed it.
Okay, and uh did you see that Mr. Hool concluded contrary to you? That the proposed facility would negatively impact the neighborhood? that the proposed facility would negatively impact the neighborhood?
Yes, I did.
In that report, Mr. Hool opines that there likely will be noise, traffic and parking problems. Is there anything in what you've reviewed with this application and you've heard with the testimony that leads you to believe that there will be problems in these areas?
No, I believe that there will not be, based upon, it's an outdoor recreational use, the noise is going to be people competing. There are no loudspeakers. This is a controlled use, this is not everybody show up and let's put twenty-five people on a court and start. This is, you make a reservation, you go and check in, you're put on your court. It's controlled. Parking, as has been testified to, should be more than sufficient for the proposed use. Again, based upon our traffic engineers' report, traffic will not be an issue, I am not a traffic engineer, I'm not going to make, I am going basing upon the expert.
Relying upon that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hool analogizes the proposed sand volley, beach volleyball facility to basketball and pickleball facilities at ball fields as well. How is this facility different than what he's analogized it to?
It's a controlled situation, it's not, again, it's not everybody shows up and it's pickup basketball or pickleball, there are all organized activities in public parks, some of them are good, some of them aren't so good. This will be controlled, and in my opinion, that being the basic premise is why this is different than the things he cited in his report.
Will there be any light pollution?
No, there's no lighting.
Right, will there be any asphalt?
No, it'll be pervious surfaces, even the parking lot is stone as opposed to asphalt, so that will cut down on dust and things like that.
Any loudspeakers?
No.
Mr. Hool talks about, quote, "associated activities," end quote, in groups of players who frequent a basketball court, do you know what that is?
I do not.
Okay, will this facility operate after sundown?
No, it will not.
And is that important to your analysis?
Yes, it's going to go, the latest it'll be open is around eight o'clock in the height of the summer. For the most part, it will be closing. Earliest will probably be five o'clock and the latest will be eight.
Mr. Hool notes that his research did not reveal other volleyball courts or beach volleyball courts near residential homes where there was no actual beach. Does this square with your own research?
No, I actually did a Google search similar to the one that's presented in Mr. Hool's report. Mine was much more concentrated, I put nearby. I was able to identify fourteen facilities. Of those five, and these are reported ones, I mean, every beach, let's be real, every beach could have a beach volleyball court, you just set up the equipment, but these are specifically designated as beach volleyball courts, so there were five specifically designated that way. And then the other nine were a mix of indoor facilities, indoor slash outdoor facilities, and then totally outdoor facilities, some of which were in public parks but directly across the street from residential properties. They were a mix of locations, some were in industrial parks, professional parks, some along corridors, but others were right up against houses. Again, open facilities where I bet you just called the local recreation department and said, I'd like to reserve the court, and they say, go ahead and do it. Again, it's a mix of it, and I believe there are enough, close enough to residential properties that don't even have the buffers that we're talking about here.
And in our case, as part of our project, is there actually a beach that's close by?
Yeah, it's across the street, it's across Park Avenue.
And you saw the renderings of the viewpoint where you're on the beach volleyball courts looking out?
Yes.
Can you see the beach?
Yes, you can.
See the water?
Yes.
Mr. Hool also notes that this site would be ideal for a commercial solar array and suggests that a solar array would be more compatible with this neighborhood, did you read that?
I did.
Okay, has Mr. Hool, you've testified in a number of applications across the state of Rhode Island, have you ever been opposite of Mr. Hool in solar applications?
I will make it clear to the board that I am an advocate for solo projects throughout the state. Mr. Hool has on at least two occasions been in opposition to the projects that I've advocated for.
And have they been in residential areas?
They are adjacent to residential areas, yes.
And what is the position that he's taken in these other instances?
Well, Mr. Hool's position has been that there's a negative impact on residential properties from solar. I will note that this.
I'm going to stop you right there, unless you have some hard facts to give us, it's purely hearsay, totally hearsay.
Yeah, and Mr. Hool's here tonight, so he can address it.
Right.
Okay. So I don't have any other questions unless you'd like to add anything, Mr. Sweeney?
No, I believe, just from that last question, one of the things I will note is that a portion, significant portion of this property is zoned residential. I believe in the town of Portsmouth, solar arrays are not permitted in residential zones. We don't have one in front of us, nor was one been proposed on this property. I will say to you that while I am an advocate for solar, if I have a choice between what, in my opinion only, and that's it, between what is proposed here and a solar array, in my opinion, I would probably prefer what is proposed here.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, can we now entertain questions?
Absolutely. First thing I'm going to address is this, is you made the statement, it's compatible with uses in the area. What are the uses it's compatible within the area?
It's, there's residential and commercial uses throughout the area. My opinion that this recreational, outdoor recreational use is a compatible use. It's not, there, again, it's not identical.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking for a compatible use in here.
The beach across, the recrea, the beach across the street.
Let's see, so you've also been making the statement that this is controlled, controlled, controlled. When, in all actuality, what you're saying is it's coordinated, it's coordinated. Yes, it's a reservation system, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's a reservation system, we all want to play volleyball, we make our reservation. Once we get on that court, we can yell, scream, swear, turn our Bluetooth speakers on, anything we want, right? Am I correct?
Right.
Right? There's no one there, there's no person assigned to my individual court as a referee or as a representative to say, so when you say it's not like a pickup basketball game, no, it's pickup volleyball game.
But, but there is onsite staff.
Two people for potentially a hundred and four players. Right? So, it's not necessarily controlled. If you had a referee at every game, I'd say, yeah, it's controlled.
It's more controlled than a public park with, you know, basketball courts where there's no reservation system, no one to enforce anything.
All that does is just, just get you court time.
Yeah, and that.
If, if these courts were public courts, it'd be the same thing, the only difference is this is private for pay and you have to make a reservation. Once you make that reservation and get on that court, it's yours for the time you've rented it.
Well, you would be in breach of contract if you brought more players than you reserve for.
Right?
So that would be minimum, and then the, then the, the, the.
Excuse me?
And then the check on that would be the onsite personnel, so it, you know, there are two things working to control the number of players on the courts.
I agree with you, courts not near the beach, everybody is throwing this term out there, beach volleyball, it's sand volleyball. The town just built two brand-new courts right down at Glen Farm, so the town is fulfilling its own comprehensive plan by building courts. This is where I kind of struggle, having run a successful business for a good portion of my life. You state that the business will probably only operate at sixty percent capacity and it's seasonal. Wouldn't you want to maximize your profits during your high season? I would think you would want that at a hundred percent every day, all day long. Why would you state that it would probably be sixty percent?
For, for the number of hours we're talking about here, yes, you're going to try and maximize it to the fullest extent you can.
Right.
I just don't, my opinion, I do not believe that there's going to be a hundred and four people on this facility, seven days a week, between eight o'clock in the morning, nine?
We've discussed a later time.
Ten o'clock in the morning, whatever the morning is to eight o'clock at night, I, and my, that's just my own opinion.
And I'll just add to that, if I can, that we do have in the operations plan, the anticipated general condition would be the two by two, which will be more sometimes, but that is the typical recreational, so I, you know, in talking about.
But could be more.
It, it could be up to one hundred and four because we are proposing that limitation.
But right now, there's no limitation, and that's personally what I'm going by, I'm going by right now, what a volleyball court can handle. Because you could say, well, we're going to propose this, and the board can say, we're not putting a condition on for that, and then it gets approved, and you could have that many there, so at least I have to look at what the maximum is.
I understand, it's a proposed restriction that we think would be a reasonable limitation to minimize impacts on the neighborhood that we would hope that this board would make as a condition of operation as special use permits have common conditions associated with them.
Last thing I want to address is comment about clapping, yelling, there's no warden against clapping, yelling, et cetera, correct?
I believe so, yes.
But under a special use permit, noise, smoke and odors are considered. Noise, clapping, yelling, Bluetooth speakers is noise, but it's common noise, however. Do you know which way the prevailing wind is in Island Park in the summer?
Out of the southeast, I would believe.
Try the southwest.
Southwest, excuse me, yes.
That comes right up over the hill to the neighborhood, so where's the sound going to carry? Along with any trash, I know it's proposed carry and carry out. It's windy in the summer, you get trash up there, it blows, where does it go? But, so for your point, I understand we can't, but we have to consider what happens to any sound and where it goes, okay? So, questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
One of mine, but.
Sorry.
Said that the chain link fence and netting can provide privacy and how would it, how would it, as a physical barrier, keeping people from going out?
Your mic, Kevin, your microphone.
Too casual here, you had said that the chain link fence would provide privacy, the chain link fence and netting would provide privacy, and I see it would provide privacy in a sense that people on the court couldn't go onto somebody else's property, but that's the only type of privacy would provide, that's, that's ought to be provided at this point?
Well, there's the, if you look at the renderings, I believe you can see from the properties to the east that the buffer, the only thing you can see from the eastward side is the top of the stanchions or the nets. From Park Avenue, you see it rise, but you really don't see anything, and the only time you actually see the facility is when you come up the road, up the driveway into the facility.
Some of that was a barrier that people could be sitting on and then looking out across people's property, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I would just add, so we have the two fences, right, we have the perimeter fence around the entire property, and then we have the security fence around the facility itself, and that's going to have the green screen on it, so that will block out that view.
Other questions?
Eric?
No, 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 sir, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note on the we, there was an exchange about, you know, what constitutes noise under the ordinance. And Mr. Sweeney and I have talked about this, I don't know if I've mentioned it before, but there is an exception under the noise ordinance for the unamplified human voice, now, I'm not talking about Bluetooths and projecting noise, that is not allowed unless you have a noise variance from the town council and maybe permission from you. There cannot be amplified music or, you know, anything other than just the human voice, and so we're talking about the unamplified human voice, again, listed as an exception under the noise ordinance at two five seven dash five. And with that, and I know we're going to go into the public comment portion of the meeting, I just wanted to reserve the ability for a response or rebuttal to material items raised.
Okay, wait, but before you go, is Mr. O'Connor here tonight?
He is.
Could you bring him up, I've got a question.
Yes.
I believe Mr. O'Connor would be the one.
Okay.
So, Mr. O'Connor, a letter was generated by the Farm Environment and Ad Department of Environmental Management on September first, are you familiar with that letter?
Yes.
Okay, so it is my understanding and reading in that letter that there are violations right now on that site, correct? It has not been maintained to what it's supposed to be, is that correct?
I, well, I'd leave it up to DEM to determine what's considered a violation according to their regs, but from.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would leave it up to DEM to determine what's a violation in accordance to their regs. I don't think they use that word in the letter, from my observations, I would say there's work to be done on the site.
And what portion of the site, Mr. O'Connor?
I'm not entirely sure on one of the comments. The other comments are on the back portion of the site, the northern area, where we're not proposing any volleyball activities. The soil piles in the middle of the site, so that's, that is impacted, or that is in the same area where the volleyball facility is. Where they're talking about for the ponding water, there's puddles here and there, I wasn't quite sure which ones they wanted to work on, because again, as part of the site development or as the final capping, whichever comes first, we're going to reuse the excess soils that's on the property, and we will certainly address any ponding at that point, you don't want to have ponding water on top of the land.
But regardless according to the letter, that all those issues, there needs to be a plan put in place to address them by October seventeenth. Correct?
Yes.
We have to take care of the ponding issues, vegetative covering, they've got to fix the silt barriers.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Venka, the reason I won't allow rebuttal is because we're not going to get into a back and forth, so my board has always, I've always run this board as you put your, put your best foot forward and you get your shot at it, and that's it, so, you know.
I understand.
We've got all night, so if there's anything else you want to add, now's the time.
No, there, there's not, and if you have questions, when you get the comments, we're available to answer them, I feel confident in our case in chief.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we may as well take a five-minute recess before we get into the public part of it. Zoning Board of Review is back in session. Now we will move on to the public part of this. So, as I stated in the beginning, first I would like to hear from direct abutters, those people that are living directly abutting the property, hang on, and after that, I will move on to people that own property next to it, and then any other interested parties after that. Again, I ask you to speak factual. And if you're going to repeat something that someone else has already said, it would save time if you just say, I agree with so-and-so on this, versus repeating the same thing over and over again, okay? So, you want to start, line up? Raise your right hand, so we can tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address for Teresa.
Laura Hosley, fifty Mason Avenue, Portsmouth.
Laura Hosley, fifty Mason Avenue, Portsmouth.
How do you spell your last name?
H O S, as in Sam, L E Y.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, I'm in favor. Um I've been living there for over four years. I've known Art for about thirty years, and I myself, believe it or not, have been playing volleyball this month for fifty years. So I kind of consider myself a volleyball expert. If this wasn't happening tonight, I'd be playing. I play sand volleyball and I play indoor volleyball. Um my son actually started under the Newport Volleyball Club, which Art started. And he's now out in Southern California, playing professionally, coaching and representing the Virgin Islands, potentially with a path to the Olympics. So I've seen where volleyball can take you. Um, you know, people have said to me, aren't you worried about the sound? I know what it sounds like. People laughing, volleyball players don't tend to be like wild. They are having a good time. Um so if that sound came at my property, just like the smell of fried clams wafts up from flows, I'd I'd be perfectly happy. Um I also, my career has been in substance abuse prevention, and I actually just started at Portsmouth Middle. And um I've always believed that if a child has a passion and they find out what they love and what they're good at, they have no reason to get into substances. And there are plenty of opportunities, more than ever, for for kids to get involved in substance use. So I would love to see the opportunities for them to get involved with healthy activities. And I feel like volleyball is one of them. And I just wanna mention that, I mean, I believe that it will be mostly two on two because that's what beach volleyball has become. There are college teams, there are pro teams, Olympic teams, they're all doubles. So I I am betting that in general, it will be two on two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Next. Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth.
You do.
Full name and address, please.
Jessica Kilbasa, um one twenty eight Highland Ave, eighty eight Russell Ave and ninety nine Russell Ave. I did submit.
Yes, you did.
I did, sorry. I'm sure you noticed that it did say draft. I have just a couple of paragraphs that I added, and I did highlight them for you, so it's not, so it's blatantly obvious that those were the additions. Can I give these to you?
Yeah, you can submit them to the board. And we'll mark these as a butter's exhibit one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have one for the source?
I do, sir.
Okay.
I also have all of the documents that I've referenced in my presentation, for lack of better um terminology. I have all of the um DEM documents as well. If you'd like to see those, they are highlighted. Um but first, the twenty-foot radius map dated April seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with a company logo stating C A I Technologies is grossly inaccurate. Utilizing the Town of Portsmouth online plat map archive website of map twenty, AP Enterprises' two residential abutting properties, lots three and four are included in the footprint of the submitted exonerating application. In addition, lot two of plat map twenty-five is also depicted inaccurately. Lot forty of plat map twenty includes property of lots two and plat map twenty-five, of plat map twenty-five. I did notice after reviewing it, the subject premises states zero walnut, zero Highland, zero Russell and zero Park Ave. But the addresses included in the map are seventy-two Russell Ave and one oh five Walnut. I did submit the map for you.
That's not uncommon to see the zero walnut, zero Highland.
These are the maps.
Were they submitted with your?
I did submit that.
Okay, so we have them. Um if we've already got them, we don't need them, but we should already have them. Aaron, do you wanna bring those up? Can you bring them up? Or maps? Can you bring them up on the screen?
So that is the map that they submitted.
Right.
But that's actually the properties, property lines of his two residential properties with dwellings on them.
But not part of this petition.
That we're not a part of this petition, no. Thank you. Um the May second, two thousand and twenty-three abutter notification letter indicates an inaccurate lot number. It states map twenty, lots one, three and thirteen. But lot two is the correct lot number, as lot three is an AP residential property with a dwelling on it. The public records state that in March of two thousand and eleven, AP Enterprises has since decided to no longer develop a volleyball complex. This decision occurred after allowed.
Slowed down a little bit.
Sorry.
Okay, so we're talking two thousand and eleven.
Correct, sir.
Ten years ago.
Yes.
Okay.
Um has since decided to no longer develop a volleyball complex.
Okay, I gotta stop you right there.
Okay.
Because just 'cause somebody says in two thousand and eleven,
Correct.
I'm not gonna do it, doesn't mean they can't change their mind.
Absolutely.
So that has no relevance so far in this hearing whatsoever.
Okay.
Just as, because I know you're gonna get to it, don't, we're not even gonna go down the rabbit hole of closing a landfill in DEM, environmental management. That's all DEM stuff, has nothing to do with this board.
So, raised arsenic levels up to forty parts per million is not something that.
That's DEM.
Okay.
That's DEM. Even if this parti- this petition were to pass, okay, it still has to go by that. And they're the ones who determine the arsenic levels down there.
Okay.
Okay. I knew that was gonna come up. There is, and you weren't at the last meeting, or?
I was.
Okay, there's high arsenic in this whole town, in this whole island. Okay, so it's not uncommon to find high arsenic. It's not up to this board to determine if that site has or has not, does or does not have an abnormally high amount of it. That's DEMs, and DEM is involved in anything that's done down there. So, again, for them to put a volleyball thing in there, they have to go back to DEM to modify previous plans.
And coastal as well, so you've you've read my essentially presentation um regarding the trash in, trash out, no litter. Um, so, am I not able to then, on page three, though, because the, that was?
No, because, you know.
So my.
It's all valid for DEM.
Okay.
Okay.
So no lighting? Am I able to continue or?
Lighting, absolutely, sure.
Because I just don't want, I know other abutters and residents would like to speak also, so if if the cap, because I did submit pictures as well, um if the cap was in fact clean soil, there's minimal vegetative growth that's occurring on it. Approximately four months ago, there were two men weed whacking the direct interior of the perimeter of the property fence. However, that vegetative growth has regrown. The caps remain barren. Oh, sorry.
We're fully aware of that, because we've seen the letter from DEM. That's why I brought up the letter early on.
Okay, so as far as the overflow parking and the grass, proposed trailers, can I speak to that?
You can speak to that, absolutely.
There will be no lighting in the facility, will not require municipal services of water or sewer. Is this due to the hazardous materials on the site, and that is not safe to dig holes necessary to set the utility poles? The trenches for water lines are a hole for septic system, especially as our community does not have municipal sewer services. In addition, there will be zero digging occurring throughout the property to set poles to hold the nets. The property includes three temporary trailers for tickets, bathrooms and storage. There isn't a need for an indoor location for up to five staffers or management that is on site, as stated in the operational plan. In my opinion, it may prove to be exceedingly difficult to get equipment such as a tractor through a trailer door. The submitted operational plan states accommodate overflow parking on the grass beyond the existing parking. Per the CRMC ascent that is in place, the earthquake stipulations outline very specifically the protocol for stabilizing vegetative cover, including specific dates, October fifteenth, November fifteenth and April fifteenth. As to the.
Again, Ms. Kabasa, I gotta stop you there. If they're in violation of CRMC or DEM, they have to address this same what they're presenting to us, again, should it get approved?
Okay.
They have to present the same exact thing to DEM, who will then deal with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm not a sir, by the way.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, is this additional parking on the grass a temporary Band-Aid for APE down the road to retract grass parking and move forward with additional parking available at Roger Williams, as APE has previously mentioned? That many more parking spaces means that many more players and spectators with music and intercom system. I know, a trash in, trash out policy and BYOB. Seriously, this sounds like a perfect storm for daily consistent noise litter in our streets and on our beaches and in the river. The original operation, operational plan included the sentence, when speaking of parking for additional spectators, like accompanying parents for a junior program or event. The updated version does not include this. It is, is this an indication that Art Palmer is no longer meeting, as he stated on page two of his operational plan? This facility will rely heavily on the strength of the beach volleyball community in striving to create a close-knit group of beach volleyball players and families as the foundation for this facility. Fencing at the perimeter will provide privacy and shielding for abutting residential properties. What type of fencing is being proposed? The current standard chain link fence does not provide any sense of privacy. Also, in the depre- engineering document regarding former kid Portsmouth landfill remedial action work plan addendum, it states on the second page, fencing will be maintained on the perimeter of the site. However, there are sections of the current fence that are not upright. If AP is not capable of ensuring the integrity of the fence currently, how are we to be assured that it will be maintained in the future? I do have, I did submit pictures of the fencing down as well.
Aaron, can you pull that up?
Thank you, Aaron. Um, I also mentioned about the silt fencing, which you've already addressed. Um I do have a video of the um runoff from the, a rainstorm on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. With that.
One where we had like the five hundred year storm.
I don't believe so.
Sounds around that time.
Maybe, um.
I think everybody had runoff that day.
Okay, well then I don't need to be, and then, of course, I said on September first, DEM sent him the letter saying that.
Which we have.
You do have that. Um as stated in the operational plan, some events require the ability to communicate to the players via public address system. These events may also use background music. Operations will be conducted in compliance with the noise ordinance and allowed hours for residential district, but flows is required to update their method of calling numbers via an intercom system. Um, it says while developing an underutilized property, I do go into the environmental land use restriction. But I'd like to jump down on page five. So the draft ELUR from VBA, VHB states that the property has been determined to contain soil and or groundwater which is contaminated with cer- certain hazardous materials and or petroleum in excess of applicable residential direct exposure criteria. No soil at the property shall be disturbed in any manner without written permission from the Department of Waste Management, except as permitted in the soil management plan. Human engaged in activities at the property shall not be exposed to soils containing hazardous materials and or petroleum in concentrations exceeding the app, the applicable department-approved direct exposure criteria. The engineer's controls should not be disturbed and shall be properly maintained. If further states that no action shall be taken or allowed, suffered or admitted at the property, if such action or omission is reasonably likely to create risk of migration of hazardous materials, create potential harm to human health or the environment, or result in disturbance of any engineer controls. The project is not pu- complete, therefore by AP submitting an application for a special use permit, AP is attempting to manipulate town and state governments by not following through with agreements between them since the beginning of the site remediation project. Public records do not show evidence that the already placed ke- clean, clean cap soil with elevated arsenic levels up to forty parts per million have been removed from the site. And the public records available still show increased levels of hazardous materials in excess of applicable residential direct exposure criteria.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you there.
So.
I.
Um, that's all done. I promised, Mr., oh, sorry. How am I supposed to address you if I'm not gonna call you Mr.?
You can call me, if you're not, you called me sir.
Oh, sorry.
Like that was a sir, I'm not a sir.
In addition, so I was comparing the proposed site plans in the capping progress map dated eight eleven sixteen. I noticed that the proposed court locations are within very pro- pro- close proximity of the monitoring wells. There's minimal different, distance from the wells to the courts, and disturbance of these engineer controls will occur.
Again, Ms. Kabasa.
I am gonna retract.
DEM is, has to review it again. Should it pass, DEM has to review all of that.
Yes. So I'm moving on, I'm sorry. It is in my opinion that the proposed use will not have any negative impact on surrounding property values. If one of the final covers, liners or other containment or monitoring systems, like the leak detection system or groundwater monitoring systems fail because you no longer is held accountable for their integrity, it absolutely will impact our property values and the river and the bay. I am also struggling to understand how the proposed facility will not generate a significant increase in traffic, and it is expected to have minimal impact on traffic, especially since it is a seasonal activity, which will not be operational for much of the year. The operational plan indicates daylight savings time, the second Sunday in March, ending the first Sunday in November. Combined with the beach traffic already present, especially since it is a seasonal activity, yes, it will generate a significant increase in traffic. It is already exceedingly difficult to turn out a Mason Ave between the beach traffic, established businesses and the informal car shows. In addition, should the Rhode Island Department of Transportation be conducting such a report? It is stated in the operational plan that there will be a hundred parking spaces with additional parking in the grass. So Mr. Palmer is anticipating at least that many attendees, thus warranting the Rhode Island DOT to complete a full traffic study. The fire chief felt it necessary to explain the circum- current circumstance with Saturday evening polo needing an EMT detail. Therefore, it can be for certain that this will be the expectation in the future. As far as the health and safety of our community is concerned, on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, I emailed Rhode Island DEM with concerns that there were soil deliveries occurring in the middle of the night, usually around nine thirty, ten o'clock. The morning of May seventh, there was a delivery that occurred at twelve thirty AM. The sound of the dump truck reverse signals and the truck bed gate slamming shut were always very obvious.
Ms. Kabasa, that has nothing to do with this petition.
It has to do with the health and safety of our community.
That is.
It has to do with the health.
Again, it is a DEM issue, it's something that happened in the past, correct? It's not happening routinely right now, correct? Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Let her finish, then you can ask.
What?
Oh, no, Mr. Furell, I said, we'll let you continue, and then he can ask his question.
I have a food for thought. On June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. On June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Newport this week published an article regarding thirty-six thousand cubic yards of contaminated soil. That is a result of the ongoing construction occurring for the building of Rogers High School.
Okay, we're not talking about Rogers High School, I, you know.
It's. It is going towards the integrity of what he's saying.
Going to give you two more minutes, and that's it.
Okay. Multiple public documents through the years explain that additional waste sites were discovered and there was need to further extend the remediation site. There has been engineering concerns and A P has multiple state infractions and deficiency notice throughout this project's history.
Could you have the doc, do you have the documents?
I do.
Okay.
Would you like them?
You can submit them to the board. If they're the ones we already have.
Probably already have.
Then we already have them and we've already read that. So we're fully aware of any other violations and the closures, et cetera.
Okay, so I have just a couple more sentences and then I'll be done under my two minutes. Time and time again, he has not upheld his agreed upon terms with various state departments. Why would we as the community of Portsmouth trust that he will not, that he will uphold what he has submitted for the special use permit? Especially after agreeing to withdraw his originally proposed plan of recreational complex. If D E M allowed the increase of seven milligrams per kilogram of arsenic up to forty to be utilized for shaping and grading. For the health and safety of not just the residents of Island Park, but for our entire community, the bay and the river, shouldn't the successful closure of Middletown's Town Dump Satuus Point? Be the model that we are striving for as the C R M C described the site's coastal feature as coastal bluff. Coastal beach, coastal wetlands and vertical seawall.
Do you have a question?
No, I didn't really have a question, I said, but it's always very, very well written and. I don't know if you quite understand what this do not is saying is that we could approve it and D E M could still shoot it down.
Right, there's things that are out of this board's total jurisdiction. And I'm expecting more people to try to come up and. Go right down and the board is just not gonna get on that rabbit hole.
I understand.
So, did you have a question?
Oh, yes, yes, this could also, the, the, the site as it existed. Prior to A P E beginning its reading remediation effort. I would consider that like a disaster, Eric. You were exposed to airborne material, potentially exposed to airborne material runoff. Scavengers digging stuff up and dragging it around. So, so if the site is capped to. To D E M's approval and C M, you know, the. R C's approval and, and the systems are put in place to monitor it. I would consider that to be a better situation than we had. Before the re- the mediation, the remediation effort started.
Once the remediation effort started, I have heard countless neighbors tell me about how they were cleaning windows. That were full of dust and the cancer rate, I can't speak and that's why it wasn't in there.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, but, 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 but. Before the thing was, was touched, it, it was sitting there just kind of bubbling away, you're doing.
It was covered, it was covered, trust me.
Okay. All right, but, 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 but it would have been covered with something that, that nobody knew what it was covered.
My, and unfortunately, like Mr. Not has already told me countless times, I'm sorry. It was, it's the health of it and the health, when I first heard about it, I went. The E P A route and did a ton of research regarding closure of town dumps and landfills. And that's where my focus has been is.
Sure. We're fully aware of that. I mean, so we've read all the D E M, I was, I have anyway, all the D E M documentation. All the counts, everything, we've, I, we've seen it, we have it, we've read it, so.
So, but, 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 but that's all I had, thank you. I didn't generate.
Cabasa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I do represent one of the directed butters who does reside next to the property and I don't know.
That's, that's fine, absolutely. Okay, so now, here's my issue. I've got multiple letters from Ms. Cardones, and I know Ms. Cardones, we've known each other for quite some time. So what are we to do with the letters? Are we to now dismiss them in lieu of testimony?
No.
Your honor, or rather, Mr. Chairman, my, my intention.
Let me, let me swear everybody in, or first, let me get your name and address. Sir.
Chairman, Attorney Matthew Fabish, on behalf of George Deborah Cardoza. They reside at seventy-four Highland Avenue, my office is located at two Dexter Street.
How do you, how do you spell your last name?
Fabish, F A B I S C H.
Thank you, and representing. George. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
Yes.
Full name and address for Teresa.
Deborah Cardoza, seventy-four Highland Ave, Portsmouth.
Okay, so how do you want to address that, I mean?
Mr. Chairman.
Cause my only thing would be now if there's conflicting testimony versus what we've been sent. Versus what she testifies to.
I think, Mr. Chairman, relative to any conflicts, the board, of course, as finders of fact, could make a determination as to.
Okay.
What, what's credible and, and what, what facts to adopt.
You understand, we're not going down the D E M road here, right?
I, I do, and, and actually, my intention with Ms. Cardoza was. Simply to supplement the, to ask that the letters be admitted into evidence and then to supplement very briefly. Uh, with some testimony based on the renderings that were produced by the.
The, the letters are already part of the package. I know there are some drawings, Aaron, can you bring up those? The ones Ms. Cardoza sent in.
I was actually looking more to, to have the, the applicant's rendering that was, that was produced this evening.
Oh, okay.
The aerial view.
Oh, all right. Get that out.
July.
Thank you. Yeah, but your attorney wants this one.
So Ms. Cardoza.
Oh, sorry.
On, on this aerial view, you, you see this rendering of the proposed project site.
Yes.
Could, yeah, you guys, I know.
You see the rendering of this proposed project site that the applicant submitted this evening?
Yes.
And can you point out to the board where your home is located relative to the proposed site?
Can you see?
We can see, just if you kind of describe it, we can probably figure it out.
Okay, it's out. It's right over here, right there. Yeah, right there.
So, Mr. Fabish, if you can come on this side, okay, got it, Eric, thank you, Aaron.
Okay, so now if we could go to the, the images that Ms. Cardoza submitted.
All right, now go to the ones she's.
Can I send, can I give this to you to look at visually?
Probably should do it through your attorney.
Okay, can you?
That's why you're paying him. Good July eleventh, that's July nineteenth.
So then these would be supplemental.
Can I get my phone?
Sure, but if you.
I sent an email, July eleven, asked you.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, if the board will simply accept the, the.
Oh, absolutely, sure. Probably only have a couple of copies, right? No, that's okay, we can share them in a term, and so we're gonna make these butters exhibit two and three.
Yeah, both of them, but.
Same ones, but those are, so, guys want to look at those?
That's just my perspective from my view from my property.
So, Ms. Cardoza, I, I wanna specifically direct your attention to the, uh, the exhibit that has the, the mound. On that, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have a, a copy in front of me because I gave them to the board.
This copy? Oh, not the, not the one that's marked, this one, that one. You guys got a chance to look at it? So I've got cars exhibit two, next three.
Ms. Cardoza, I want to direct your attention to exhibit number two. A butters two.
You can pull the mic down, it'll move down, it's heavy.
To a butters two here?
Yes.
And can you describe what that, uh, what's, what's located in that image?
Okay, basically, it talks about the original grade where my car is, and then there is. The foliage in the back, which is the, uh, part of the eight foot chain link fence. Owned by A P Enterprises and then behind there, there's another elevation about twelve to fifteen feet. And then there's another elevation of dirt, which is about twenty-five to thirty feet. And this is what I see from my property. So can you imagine vehicles on that site?
Okay, so. So this is your view from the property, and then number three, is that also taken from your property?
Yes.
Okay, now where on your property is this taken from?
On the side of my property.
Okay, and, uh, as far as, um, a butters number two, where is that image taken from?
They're both taken behind, actually behind my house, I'm sorry.
Okay, it looks like one of these images may be taken from a deck, is that right?
Oh, yes. Uh, this is taken from my, my, from my bathroom window, actually.
Okay, and so the image taken from your bathroom window, the, the way that your house is, is organized, you have a lower level. And then you live on the second level, isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I live on the first level.
Okay, um, and so you have your bathroom, your living room and your bedroom all on that second.
Yes.
Okay, um, and approximately, how long have you been living on the site?
I haven't moved in yet because it took a long time to build because of the. Contaminated soils that they were spreading around and we were suffocating, we couldn't breathe.
Okay, so you had attempted, previously attempted to move into the site.
Yes, but we have, we're, we're in the process now, actually.
Okay, and, um, you house your livestock on the site as well.
Yes, we have a horse.
Now, um, when did you first come into ownership of the site?
I believe it was October two, nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay, and your intent was to move to the site as soon as you could build a home, isn't that right?
Yes, yes.
Um, and that home is now finally complete.
Yes.
And, um. Have you had an opportunity to stay overnight on your, on your property?
Yes.
Um, how many nights in a row do you attempt to stay over at your property?
Attempt to? Well, we're trying to move in, we're still moving.
So you're trying to stay there every night?
Yes.
Okay, what in, what impacts are preventing you from staying at your property every night?
Well, we're moving in, so we're still in the process.
Let's talk about the impacts of, of the site, of the project site on your property.
The project? That affected us on the property?
Yes.
Okay, well.
So let's start with the first impact. What would you say the first area of impact to your ability to live on this, on the site has been?
Well, first of all, they were constantly. Covering it, you know, which is.
Stopping you right there.
I, I know, but.
Stop, stopping you right there, what happened in the past has nothing to do with the petition now. You have to, all we're looking for is the impact of this petition on this property.
And, Mr. Chairman, to the extent.
But you're, no, 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 you're trying to go back, which we're not gonna do, okay? We're talking about how is this petition? Gonna impact that property, what, what are the positive or the negative impacts gonna be? That's what we need testimony to.
So currently, you're experiencing dust on the property, is that right?
My, yes, that's a serious problem on the property, it's dust and the board of health.
Nothing we can do about that right now.
Okay, but if you looked at the September first letter from D E M.
Don't want to talk about the September first letter.
I mean, September first, recently, he talks about that there needs to be vegetation.
There are, they are the people that are responsible for that.
But it's impacting me.
So if that's who you have to deal with if it's impacting you right now.
It is impacting me right now.
So you need to deal with D E M, we can't do anything about that right now.
But one of the criterias is.
I understand, I understand that, but right this minute. If you need assistance in getting that immediately resolved, you need to work with D E M. I understand what you're saying is, that if they do things down there, you feel it's gonna impact your health, that we understand. But if you're saying right now they need to get down there and do this, we can't do anything about that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't believe that's what she's saying, what she's saying is.
How I'm taking it.
That, yeah, there is dust that is moving from the subject site to her property. And, and the proposal is to increase dust and sand on the project.
That we get.
And so what are your concerns relative to the increase to dust and sand on the project site and your property?
My concern is the health.
Right.
I have been affected with respiratory problems because of this.
Okay, now, if that, we heard about. An estimation of, of seventy-four trips. Or seventy-four car spaces, now if there were seventy-four car spaces and we're not accepting that that's an accurate. Uh, for trial, but just if there were seventy-four cars that were kicking up dust. From this area onto your property on a daily basis, how would that impact your, your daily quality of life?
Well, of course it would, because it would be surrounding my property.
Okay. And vehicles also have some degree of noise, right? They have backup warnings, they. Uh, sound horns when they're leaving, vehicles create noise, don't they?
Yes.
Okay, and the noise from the property as it currently exists and as you believe it will exist once this property. Uh, is developed or if this property is developed. Um, how would that impact your daily quality?
That would definitely change the quality of life. As for me, I like quiet, I like to hear the birds singing. And I don't know about you, but every time you hear any noise, whether you want to hear it or not. Your mind goes to all that noise and it's distracting and it will take away the peace. And the quality of life that we could have there, we have about two acres and that's why we moved there.
Now, um, you also have runoff that comes from that property onto your site, is that right?
Yes.
And how does that impact your ability to use your site?
It impacts my property around the, the property line because it increases the mosquitoes. It drains onto my property and it pools around the edge of my property, so I can't have. The use of the edging of my property and I have to be very careful because I have a horse. And you know with equine and all the diseases that can come with mosquitoes.
And as proposed, this project does nothing to remediate the, the runoff onto your property, doesn't it? Now, you've also had an opportunity to see the, the, uh, safety fence that was put up. Uh, around the subject site, is that right?
Yes.
Now, uh, can you describe the state of that fence on your property or as it borders your property?
Okay, that fence is not maintained. We had tried several times, it comes forward onto our property. We have tried several times just to secure it and you can't secure it by yourself, you need a, you need a couple of people to do it. Uh, to secure it because the fence is heavy, it's an eight foot chain link fence. And on the side of my property, the fence actually fell, slid down the pole and you can't pull it up. So it's actually open.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I don't have anything else for, for my client in particular, I'm welcoming questions from the board or I can move on to Mr..
My, my only thing is I just want to reiterate, so. Mrs. Cardoza, for the dust to get to your house from the property. The wind would have to come out of the southwest, am I correct?
I don't know my, sorry.
From the ocean side.
Yes, from the ocean and from the wetland side.
Right, okay, thank you. Right, okay, thank you. I'm good.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything, you know, good, thank you.
Chairman, at this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Hall.
Sure. So we tell the truth?
I do.
An address, please.
James Hall, one ninety-eight Union Street, Portsmouth.
Mr. Hall, I understand you've recently been accepted as an expert before this board, but for uh the sake of the record, if you could just very briefly uh outline your licensing and experience.
Okay, so very briefly, I'm a a real estate um uh broker in the state of Rhode Island and have been uh since September nineteen seventy-three. Uh, I became, so this is my fiftieth anniversary month. I became licensed uh as a certified general appraiser uh when the state began the issuance of certification, uh which would have been in nineteen ninety or ninety-one, and I've been continuously um employed in those capacities since nineteen seventy-three. I um have been um uh accepted as an expert in numerous zoning um matters throughout the state of Rhode Island. Uh, all the courts in Rhode Island and um some uh tax appeal stuff in Massachusetts.
And your uh curriculum vitae was attached to the report that you produced for the board, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I moved uh that Mr. Hall be recognized as an expert in real estate and real estate appraisal.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second, most of them made in second to ex- um to accept Mr. James Hall as an expert in real estate appraisal. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. And uh Mr. Chairman, just for the record, uh I had requested uh real estate and real estate appraisal, is it limit, is the recognition limited to?
Usually if we acknowledge him as a real estate expert.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Hall, have you had an opportunity to review the documents submitted by the applicant?
I have.
And uh specifically, uh have you had a chance to uh visit the site?
I have.
Um, and when did you visit the site?
Um, you know, I I visited the site in July of this year.
And uh you've had a chance to review the reports that were submitted by the experts uh proposed by uh the applicant?
Yes.
And specifically, you've had an opportunity to review the report uh prepared by Mr. Sweeney?
I have.
And uh do you have any opinions about the methodology reflected in that report?
You know, I I don't really wanna get too much into um uh an attack of uh Mr. Sweeney's report. I felt that it was deficient in a number of areas. Um, you know, I didn't feel that there was a lot of support or a lot of attempt to demonstrate within the report exactly the uh methodology that he had used to uh opine uh what he had opined within the report. Um, and I I find it kind of interesting in tonight's hearing that there was uh some response to my report uh as opposed to having outlined it originally within his own report.
And so uh appraisers are governed by certain rules and standards in the context of their profession, isn't that right?
We are.
And you're not just allowed to jump to conclusions without data or comparable properties?
That's correct.
Um, so what is appraisal standard number one?
Um, it has to do, the, we're referring to the standards, the uniform standards of professional practice. Standard one has to do with the development of an appraisal.
Okay, and so um specifically, you're required to find comparable properties or other approaches that fairly assess the the value of a property.
That is correct, yes.
And um in preparing your report, did you attempt to find other similar uses to the uh proposed use?
Yes, no, I think the board has had all of our reports for a period of time, and that I I think you probably have gone through them. But specifically, uh in answer to that question, uh what I had done was I had tried to find as many um beach and sand volleyball courts as I could. I was very surprised to find, and the the specifically, the reason that I was looking for them was to find out how many of them were in a very similar situation in which they were butting directly up against residential properties. I was very surprised uh as as I went looking for them, that uh there were very few open-air courts that were anywhere near a residential property. Typically, they're on beaches. Uh typically, they're in areas where there are condominiums built up to the beaches. Um, that's as close as most of the residential areas ever got on any of these. Uh, most of the ones that I looked at, and point of fact, were not um were either indoors, or they were in parks that were distant from residential properties. And in every case, what I did was I zeroed in on the Google Earth and surrounded the neighborhood to find out exactly how close residential properties were. I really wasn't able to find any that were comparable to this at all. Uh, certainly not with the density, but in a lot of cases, one of the things that um Mr. Nod had said earlier was about the town of Portsmouth putting in two courts. Typically, that's what you'll find. You'll find only a couple of courts. You don't have a very large complex of courts. Uh, almost anywhere that I found, they're almost incidental, they're not a typical type of um large complex.
So um you would not agree with uh Mr. Sweeney's statement earlier tonight? That uh by performing a Google search, there are uh volleyball courts that are analogous to the one that's proposed here um that the that the quote, excuse me, the big board could rely on to uh make a finding?
Well, they were not in any way, I noticed that on page, uh my report has actually a map where each one of the sites that I inspected um using the same methodology was found. I think it's on page six of my report. And they go all the way up and down the uh east coast from Boston down to Maryland. The um I didn't notice that there was any indication of which these courts were that Mr. Sweeney had looked at. Um, he knew, he did, I heard him say that a number of them were in enclosures. So they're not really similar to what we're talking about. I really can't judge exactly what he had seen.
Now, uh you've had an opportunity to review the report of the Town Planning Department, is that right?
I have.
And specifically, you've had a chance to review the analysis contained in the document entitled Comprehensive Plan Analysis?
Yes.
And the portion related to Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes.
Do you agree with the analysis contained in those sections?
No, not fully.
Okay, why is that?
All right, so now we really get into it. There's really three areas that that I disagree with, or that I find the uh the proposal is not really compatible. I don't think it's really compatible with the neighborhood. I don't think it's compatible with the park recreation open space most master plan that was submitted to the town in May twenty twenty-three. I don't think it's really uh compatible with the comprehensive land use plan. Let me just give very briefly my reasoning. We'll start with the park recreation open space to which you refer. Uh, this is not a public park, this is a business. Uh, it it essentially is not just to designed to um service a neighborhood in a very sort of the the way you would expect a park. Parks are generally designed to uh service the neighborhood for uh recreational activities or the community. Uh, the master plan has a map of all of them in the town of Portsmouth. They refer to the uh system as as being a a good system as it is. Uh, and they recommend within that that they would um work with community partners. Uh, and and I wanted to make sure there was no confusion. As a community partners, community partners are defined specifically as nonprofits um that are um similar to uh five oh one C three nonprofit organizations, similar to the Kunkka Island Land Trust um to uh that type of an organization that would be uh not uh in uh for-profit, not trying to uh maximize the number of people that are on site, not concentrating um to have one particular use in a very dense area. And so I I don't think that it really is very compatible with the whole concept of the parks and recreation, because this is, as I said, a private business, not um the kind, it's not a park in the traditional sense. Um, I also um you know, noticed that one of the things that when it comes to the concept of a business on the site um that you would, because it is a single purpose, and because your idea is to draw as many people as possible, you're gonna be drawing people from outside the community, uh which is typically not the purpose of a park or a part of the recreational system. Uh, that is really to serve as people for the activities of the community on on the site. Um, so I don't know if they'll stop there on that particular issue if you wanna, okay.
Well, so why don't we go over the the grounds for the other two uh reasons that you disagree with the?
Okay, so the 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 second thing, I guess, has to do with the neighborhood. I I disagree with the noise factor. I think this will create a lot of noise. Uh, and I and uh Mr. Nott's observation that the prevailing winds are typically gonna blow it into the neighborhood is correct. Uh, this is much higher. You have thirteen people, um thirteen courts that are competitive. Uh, the chances are very good that they'll be creating a cacophony that that noise will then uh go into the neighborhood. Um, I think that um they are talking that they, I remember hearing that it was a two-hundred-foot distance from the courts to the nearest neighbors. I I just wanna use an analogy that in my neighborhood, somebody has put a recreational court three hundred feet away that's fully buffered. And I still hear the noise from that court, it's a single court. So I I think that the concept of putting thirteen courts um in, as I said, in a competitive situation in which there could very well be spectators who would be adding to that noise, I think it's wrong to think that it's not gonna be very noisy. I think the second um issue um is that uh in spite of the um Mr. Brayton's traffic um testimony, and in spite of what has been said, um I think the point that was that uh his observation of the neighborhood was on a Wednesday afternoon prior to the summer is really telling. You have uh a lot of businesses, restaurants that are um you know, a lot of them, their business increases dramatically in the summer. And that you have some that only are open in the summer. You have the beaches that are directly across the street. And people in their own yards are gonna be outside, but I think that the traffic, there's no other parking. Uh, the parking is very limited along the street. Uh, each of the businesses has has some parking, but parking in generally is, in general is tight down in that area, and I think that there's gonna be a temptation for a lot of people to leave their car on site and walk to the businesses uh that are there. Um, I think that it's gonna be very difficult to monitor that kind of uh situation as to whose car, whether the people are there. I think that people may go directly across the street. Uh, and the other uh issue is that if there are other uses, one of the things that was mentioned was strength training. If you have a number of other people that are on site, uh the ch- the chances are they're not gonna be leaving right away, that their cars will be there. So there's a, they're going to be mounting up, and I think that uh that's totally unavoidable in this kind of a situation, just looking at it from a logical standpoint. Um, the other, the other point that I made was um that um it's not really a compat- uh compatibility with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Um, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan does uh have a whole section on uh in the land use on recreation. And they list all the partners that are not part of the town system, and they are all very open space. Uh, very, you know, the the the, probably the noisiest of all of them are golf courses. The rest of them are hiking trails or uh boat launch areas. So I don't think that this is, this business uh strictly is compatible with the recreational uses that are in the the Comprehensive Land Use Plans, but then in addition, uh one of the the um problems that we have about the the um comp plan is that, of course, it is um regulated, the zoning is the legislative arm of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And the, in this particular limited business zone, and the the business zone that is there, uh it talks about serving the community. Um, and and this use is not, as I would say, really a community uh use. So I don't think that, so my my statement that it fails uh really conformity with the neighborhood, it fails conformity with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and it fails conformity to the uh recreational master plan study that was just done.
Mr. Hall, um you familiar with other capped uh public reused sites in in the state of Rhode Island?
I am.
And um how have those sites been redeveloped?
Well, they, the, the, they do not have an any impact that is comparable to those.
Talking about, we're talking about this petition, not a landfill.
That's good.
Out in Johnston or Cumberland.
Don't need to get into it.
Fair enough. Uh, Mr. Hall, have you ever played a game of golf?
I have never played a round of golf in my life.
Have you ever had a municipality uh which has a golf course?
Which, yes, in fact, and frequently, I've done appraisals on those things.
Okay, and what is your understanding as to the frequency with which uh or the the capacity of an eighteen-hole golf course? How many, how many pairs or groups can uh can enter or exit the golf course at one time?
You know, this was not part of uh original study, but the the truth is that it is, it is fair to say that a foursome um you know, maximized, you might be able to get one per hole, there's eighteen holes on a golf course, on a full golf course. But we are talking a spread out over typically smallest golf course is gonna be about a hundred acres, a hundred and ten acres, then much more typically in the hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty range, some over two hundred. Uh, it's a far different, uh the landscaping is 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 done to spread it out, you know, it's a completely different issue.
So so when people are arriving to play a round of golf, it may be that that foursome at most that's arriving at one time, right?
I I I can't really comment on that.
Um, certainly not all the players that are playing at one time would be arriving typically at the same time.
No.
But as you understand the operations plan here, once operations begin at that hour, whether it be eight o'clock or ten o'clock, whatever hour that is, all the players who have course reserved, which could be up to the hun- will take the hundred and four number that's been uh mandated about tonight, all of those players could be arriving at the same time and changing over every uh increment that's that's permitted under the reservation system.
This Babish, the same could be said about golf. You could have a tournament and everybody could show up at once.
How, but a tournament is is not.
You know, it happens.
Tournament is 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 an exceptional uh operation for a golf course, whereas what we're talking about here is a daily operation.
Golf course, you generally will have a number of foursomes show up at the same time. They all have tee times every three to five minutes, so you'll have a number of people show up at the same time.
Yeah, I think so. Um, I think at this point, we're we're close to just wrapping up. If I could just have you summarize uh your evaluation of the standards for a special use permit um and the aspects of this project that um failed to satisfy those requirements.
Okay, so I did look at the the special use standards, um and I felt uh I'm gonna go through them, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna go through them. The desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. In my opinion, it will be detrimental to the. In my opinion, it will be detrimental to the surrounding area. I, I really do believe that it will be um excessively noisy. I think that you can have a nuisance from having that many people that are suddenly into the neighborhood. Uh, during the summer in um, in what is already a busy area. Um, and, and I think that um. It just could very well have a strong negative impact on um the, the neighborhood in general. Uh, compatible and neighboring land uses again. As I stated, the commercial district C one is established to provide areas for commercial establishments. And serve the community and townwide shopping and service needs. Uh, I don't feel that that really uh conforms to the intent. Uh, this is not a shopping or a service need. And none of the other uses along Park Avenue are really similar to this use. Um, yeah, it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood, uh standard three. Uh, I've already said that I believe that it will create a nuisance in the neighborhood. Uh, for adequate protection afforded by the surrounding property by use of open space. Uh, I, it is very close, uh it is much higher. Uh, and I do not believe that they will be able to truly have the kind of buffering necessary. To stop the noise that will be coming from the site. Um, I'm also, they did allude to the fact that there would be no. Uh, loudspeakers or lights immediately, but that that would be something that could happen down the road. If that ever happened, it would really um exacerbate every part of what we're talking about. Um, adequate protection, uh no, sorry, safe vehicular access. And parking are provided, uh we've gone through that. Um, I think they've made an argument that they do have sufficient parking, but I believe that because of. The lack of parking in the rest of the neighborhood, there's going to be some overflow that's going to create problems. Control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and other objectional feature. Uh, again, I don't believe that they're going to be able to s- uh suppress all the noise from um the site. Solar rights of the abutters, there's no question, the solar right should not be impacted. So on that, they're in conformity. Uh, it'll be compatible with the comprehensive land use plan. I've already testified to the fact. That the comprehensive land use plan does have. Um, in element two in the land use, they deal uh heavily with recreation. And, and this is not the type of use uh that is referred to. Uh, most of them, as I said to you earlier, were Oakland Forest, Sakona Greenway Trail, Teddy's Beach. Um, those, those are clearly not similar uses. Um, nine, the health, safety, and welfare of the community are protected. I don't believe that it would be. Uh, for all the reasons that I've already stated. Ten, um consistent with design purposes, uh that's really not applicable in this particular case. So I do think that uh overall the conclusion is that I don't believe. That it satisfies the five criterion, criteria for the uh special use permit that they are requesting.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hool?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, uh if I could just highlight a, a few more points.
Sure.
We, we heard about the revised traffic study this evening and I think um the board has pointed out several features of it. Uh, one of the features I just wanted to highlight is um that. To the extent that any spectators beyond the players are anticipated, uh that would. Seem to put the trips generated and the parking over the requirements of the ordinance and over the requirements for DOT. Um, because we're, we're talking about a hundred and four players. If a player comes with a parent and then another parent or a sibling or. Uh, any other spectator comes, you've essentially doubled the capacity uh that's required for, for parking and. Um, and trip generation. The other uh major feature of the traffic study that I want, uh wanted to highlight is the fact that bench players are simply not. Um, contemplated, um both within volleyball, and I'm not sure whether volleyball. Uh, has bench players, but I, I understand, Mr. Chairman, you're familiar with the sport. Um, and certainly within soccer and beach soccer in particular, there's unlimited substitutions and there is a, a deep bench. Um, so those players have not been factored into the traffic study.
Depends on the league that you play in. I mean, if it's a six V six indoor league, usually you have at least two substitutes. You know, four V, four V, four B four on the beach, you may have two substitutes or one substitute. It's possibly.
Pursuant to the FIFA rules.
Yeah, all depend, yeah, it all depends on the league or the group that are playing, et cetera.
I think with that, uh I'd simply point out, um, or I would simply highlight the uh. The factors um contained in Mr. Hool's report. Um, and that the majority of this site is on and abutting residential uh properties. Uh, we've heard testimony from my client and from others about the way that this development will actually impact their ongoing quality of life. And I would suggest for those reasons that uh granting the special use permit is, is not appropriate at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Babish. Any other direct living abutters? Sir. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
Yep.
Full name and address of Teresa.
Uh, Jeff Costa, one oh two Russell Avenue.
Costa, correct?
Costa, C O S T A.
Go ahead, Mr. Costa.
I've been watching what's going on here since day one. It's been back to me and on the side of me. Nothing they've said has been true from the beginning. They were supposed to stop filling here, they went here. They. Why about everything? I don't trust anything they say. You say the D E M's here, what is the D E M? I tried calling the D E M time after time after time. They never call me back. They won't answer the phone. I call them up, I finally, I call the governor's office to have them. Tell them to call me. Didn't work. The only way I got them to call me was I went through the sewer department because I was afraid of them. Backfilling everything, flooding my sewer out. Finally, she called me. She's pissed off now because she got her ass whinned. Well, I tell her what I see. I said, who's watching this site? I see them roll dumpsters down there and dump asbestos. Oh. I know everything that goes in there. I said, what are you going to do about it? If you ain't got pitches, you ain't got nothing. I spent thirty-eight years in the insulation trade. I uh certified asbestos remover. I know how they treat asbestos. That's what they dumped in there. They shouldn't let them dig a hole in that place for a bench post until EPA gets in there and tests it.
We can't do anything about that, Mr. Costa.
Get the EPA down there.
We can't do that. We have no legal authority.
Go to the town council, have the town council call.
Then you should go to the town council and petition them. We can't, we have no legal authority or power to do that.
Well, I'm saying you shouldn't let them dig a postal. I seen them bring trucks in on Saturday, dig with the excavator, bury stuff and fill it right in. I know you can't do nothing about it, but they're not truthful about anything.
Totally understand where you're coming from. Total.
They.
Yep.
Everything, everything they say is a lie. It's telling me my garage is on its property. Has a Savak and go, gee, I guess it's not, huh? It's just a dirtbag.
Got it, Mr. Costa.
And.
That's.
That, that is, I mean.
Traffic guy.
When did he go down there? You, you ever been on Park Avenue on a Saturday afternoon?
Costa, we've got it. Yes, we've been down there. We all live in this.
You got all the dude to get out of Mason Avenue on a Saturday afternoon in the summer. Now you're going to get these idiots whipping out of there because they just lost a stupid volleyball game.
Okay, Mr. Costa, is there, Mr. Costa, is there anything else constructive you'd like to add, please? I mean, some of the things you're talking about, we have no authority to do. You're now degrading people, which I won't accept on this board.
What do you mean degrading people?
Just call the owner of dirtbag.
Well, he is.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to step down from the podium, please. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Full name and address, please.
Peter Roberts. Eddie Amorad Avenue. Okay. Now that's Eddie Amorad Avenue, but my driveway is on Mason.
Okay.
Okay, and uh what I want to bring up, not about the toxic waste, but the dust. Every day we have to clean our windows. And you can go out at nighttime, clean your windows, you'll have to do it again in the morning. That's how dusty this is. And nothing has been done to stop it. They should have to cover this with something that the dust can't blow. Before they started this project, we didn't have that problem. And the thing with the dump before was, that was a wetland. They filled it in with the dump stuff and then they put dirt over the top of it, so it didn't have the toxic coming out. And then people drove on dirt bikes and three-wheelers and stuff and that packed it all down. This made a difference when they brought this in. Another thing I want to bring up is. I am one hundred percent disabled war veteran. I do not sleep. I'm up all the time, all night. I usually don't get out of bed till one or two in the day. And this kind of stuff will really disrupt my life, really. And I don't want it. And I hope everybody understands that you can't do this to people who live in the neighborhood. Now, there was a cottage in the back of this yard. My fa- father was born there in nineteen nineteen. I was born there in nineteen forty-eight. That's my connection with this, all these years. And all of a sudden, this is thrown in here, had no regards for the people who lived there. And another thing I understand about toxic waves, I'm a Vietnam veteran. And I know what Agent Orange did, and nobody cared. And now we got people doing it right next to me. I'm going to bring up something else. You're going on Park Ave, you're heading toward the hill. The people who are coming along, all the cars are parked along the seawall side, all right? And the people coming towards you are over the center line. That's the way they do it because of the traffic. I don't know if any of you ever noticed that?
Yeah.
Uh, and people down there at the beach. They go to put stuff in their car and they will actually go to the driver's side and open the back door and start loading stuff. And kids run out in the street all the time. You really have to be careful here. Now, they're talking about what they have for parking on property. That's not going to be enough for when they get the people they're going to get. They're going to be parking on the other side of the road. And now something was just talked about on uh town council. But what's going on at Comer Fins Point? People going there, parking in front of mailboxes, parking in front of driveways, and now they want to put a stop to this stuff. Well, this is going to be even worse here. They'll be parking on our side streets. And they won't have room on, on Park Avenue. And everything's going to be blocked. And those streets are not wide at all. And you don't have any kind of a shoulder. That's the difference when you're in a small community like this. So that's what I want you to think about. What it's going to do to the people who live here. Never mind somebody who's coming in from nowhere else and is going to make money off it. It's going to really ruin our lives. So please, think about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay, next. Oh, come on. Okay.
Good evening, me.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Full name and address, please.
My name is Tom Castleman. I live at three sixty-five Riverside Street. That's the fourth street inn from the park, in terms of where the dump is. I, I wanted to bring up two points if I can, and I'm not going to talk about the D E M, but I would like to commend Mr. Hool over here for his presentation. He said everything I want to say with two exceptions. One of them is quality of life. That's not insignificant. And our previous um person talked. Uh, from the heart about that. He experienced it personally, his whole life. I've lived there fifty years. I've seen how the parks changed in fifty years. I've seen how the walls come up and the walls come down, and my water level behind my house is not where it used to be in high tide. The problem is, is that when I go through my park, I see a lot of young families now. I talk to them. I raised my kids there. I raised uh my grandchildren because they come down and swim there on Blue Bell Point. And I talk to young mothers. I'm worried about them. They're dragging those kids along the streets. They're going through that dust. And it's not just in the street next to it. And I asked them, some of the older kids, do you play in that area? Well, our mom and dad says we can't do that. Well, why not? Well, they said it was poison. They said, what do you mean poison? Yeah, we call it poison park. We can't play there. And there's a big playground at the other end of that park. I go by the area quite often. There's playgrounds there, there's facilities there. I don't see kids there. They don't play there. The word is out. Don't go in that section of the park. It's dangerous. And when I talk to some of these young mothers. I say to them, look, keep your kid away from there. It's not settled. It's not finished. It's not safe. And my other point is this. I've been in the business fifty years. And over the fifty years, I've been through many committees like this. In my business, I have to talk before special use committees, give my presentation, try to find a way to help my client out. And one thing I learned over the years in dealing with committees, special use permits, they're not handed out like candy. They got to be deserved and earned, and they have to be respected for what the person, the good faith actor is telling you. And I wonder about the good faith actor that we're dealing with now. That's not an opinion, it's a fact. The facts are there for everybody to see. You can draw your own conclusion. I have my own. But I wonder about the one factor that I have to deal with every time they come before committees like this. One of the basic things I have to prove for my client is need. What is your need? And oftentimes it can be financial, it could be physical in terms of geography or the plot or lot. It could also be, for example, economic. But one thing that's consistent through all my years of dealing with people like yourselves, and I respect this. Because I've had to, I have to respect the will of the law, is to make sure that my client, or any client. Demonstrates a need and a good faith. And part of that need is not just to make somebody make a profit. I can't get my clients a special use permit because they want to make more money. Or because they think they deserve more money, or they have a illusion that somehow they're helping the community. They have to prove that need in black and white and have to prove to back it up. And I think that the idea of need has not been demonstrated enough from my experience to say why. AP Industries needs to make a profit out of this. And the impacts of that need will be generational in the future. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Castleman. Questions from Mr. Castleman? Thank you, Mr. Castleman.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth?
I do. I'm Larry Fitzmaurice, fifty Christian Court, and I'm not a resident of Island Park. I'll be quick. The presentations that we heard from AP Enterprises representatives. Dealt with crowd size, parking issues, noise, and things of that nature. They were calculated against a number which is somewhere between a hundred and four and a hundred and forty, depending on how you calculate it. But in this proposal from AP Enterprises. If I remember correctly, is a line that says that a special event. A licensed special event is possible for attendance of more than five hundred people. The, this thing is not calculated, you know, the effects on the, on the environment and on the. Community are not calculated against that one in this report. Clearly, if it's over five hundred, and over five hundred is an unlimited number, then. All of these problems, the parking.
all of these problems, the parking, the noise, the dust generated on the top of the mound, et cetera, are much, going to be much worse. And I'd like to point that out. I think that that is a calculation that needs to be done. And I think it's a problem, and I think it's a major problem for this thing. Now, I will go on and support some of the comments made in terms of the traffic on Park Avenue during the summer. If it's a beach day, we all know that it's bad now. Any addition to that is going to be making it worse. And, you know, I think that's the end of my remarks. I'm available for questions.
Mr. Fitzmaurice, while I have you up here, I do have a letter. You're currently president of Portsmouth Concerned Citizens.
Correct.
Correct. I'll read the letter now. Dear Mr. Knott, members of the zoning board review the members of the Portsmouth Concerned Citizens, conducted an informal petition regarding the request by AP Enterprises. Kind of going to stop there because Portsmouth Concerned Citizens is not an aggrieved party to this, first and foremost. Second of all, that the 178 signatures on here, each 178 of those people have the right to come up and speak. The board has no method whatsoever to validate any of those signatures. So therefore, this will not be considered part of the record, and will be totally disregarded. So you're a lawyer. Okay?
All right. I did point out in the letter, it was an informal petition.
Understand that, but again, the group as a whole is not an aggrieved party, and there's no way to validate any of the signatures. However, any of those members have the absolute right, such as you did, to come up and speak if they'd like.
Well, I will only point out that, yeah, we don't have any mechanism for
No, 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 no.
aggrieved party, but we do have a good number of members in Island Park.
And they have the right to speak if they would like.
All right.
You've already spoken, sir, sorry.
They are fine. It doesn't matter.
They're not an aggrieved party, so no, they're not. And you've had your opportunity, thank you. You said you were representing Mrs. Cardozo. Now you're telling me you're representing somebody else?
There's no law or doctrine.
The Portsmouth Concerned Citizens are a political watchdog that are not an aggrieved party to this. Okay? And every so-called signature member has the right to get up and speak, so they can. And if you would like to get up with every one of them and speak, that's entirely up to you and them. But, but you're No. No. Nope. Unless you can validate 178 signatures.
There's no mechanism.
Thank you. That's my point. No. Thank you. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
But my word means nothing?
I'm not saying your word means nothing, but in this world, we need to have those validated.
In some world, we got rules.
Well, there might very well be. But each one of those people, such as yourself, has the right to come up here and speak.
Not everybody could be here.
They could call in. There's a way for everyone to speak. There's a method. Any questions for Mr. Fitzmaurice? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Beth, oh.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes. My name is Mary Beth McDonald, M.C. Donald. I live at 115 Cottage Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And I'm just, wanted to stand up and say that my name is one of the names listed. And, and I agree with what the residents have said. And, and I oppose the special permit because it will affect the quality of my life.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. Come on up, sir. 15 minutes of fame. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Randy Lawrence Match, 467 Park Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
What's your last name, sir?
Match.
M.A.T.C.H.?
M.A.T.S.C.H.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've been a resident here for 20 years now, and I love Portsmouth. I am retired right now, and my wife and I do an incredible amount of environmental cleanup, as just volunteering. We were in the news, in case you didn't see, but we're cleaning up the Blue Bell Cove right now, or Gold's Cove. But some of the things I just want to bring forward is that I raised my kids here. They've grown up now, but we do have my granddaughter. And we have seen what the different traffic conditions have been down here for 20 years. We've seen it morph in different ways. And right now, we see in the summertime, the summer traffic, and this is when they're talking about doing this, you know, their event here. What I want to say about, I don't know this company. I've just been hearing, you know, different things from the meetings here. But what I have gathered is that, you know, their vague and their assessment of what they're, how they're going to use these courts, whether it's going to be two, they're kind of playing off that it's going to be two-player, you know, two and two. And then they morphed it over to four and four, and they said there's a possibility for six and six. Okay, so the assessment on the parking and all that, we already discussed. It's already been, you know, kind of beaten to the ground here. But I think if, if it goes forward and they do allow this, and there is insufficient traffic or parking for the traffic, then we're going to find, just like the residents that live in that immediate area, I'm going to see that they're going to be parking on the back roads and, you know, it's just, that's going to be a mess right there for those. So I feel bad for them. But what I want to bring out, what I've noticed is that their vague and their use, their previous, and this is, I know it's in the past, but this is when they were developing that land and bringing in all the dirt and all that stuff, and they were doing this at night. And we know that the heavy equipment, I know I've worked in that field there for a time, that the noise backing up and all that stuff, I know what that sound is. So, and that's, that's in the past, I understand that. And then they don't talk about how they're going to control with this number of people out there, how they will control calling different, okay, the players so-and-so for this tournament. Is it, are you going to use a megaphone? They're saying they're not going to have a wired-in speaker system, I understand that. But now you're talking about, well, how are you going to control the games? It's not just, okay, now what? I go to the neck, you know, it's, I don't know what it's going to be like for that, but I can assume that they're going to have to use some kind of vocal method to do that. So we know that they also, just tonight, we learned that when that traffic assessment was done, this was prior to the main season here for the summer season. Okay, so that was kind of misleading for that assessment. And then we just heard that the fencing around the area has not been maintained. So all this together is like, what kind of an actor is this individual, this entity? What kind, you know, what are they going to actually uphold to the standards that are being put out? So that's, that's all I want to say. I oppose it. You know, other than that, I like the game, but I do oppose it being held down here in Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. She just left, she just said, "You go." Raise your right hand.
Veronica Berisillo, 1 Leedom Street, Portsmouth.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you for pulling the microphone down.
So, very briefly, we know that we have heard a lot of things about what they want to do and what they should or could do for the community. I am completely opposed. Quality of life, traffic, noise levels, and the fact that right now, having sand and the wind is going to be blowing towards our neighbors and in the traffic, people will be parking along our neighborhood. We see it as the traffic that happens with flows and shortages, especially on the weekends. And now that we have the, the cars come in, and then they do the little motorcycle situation that has happened too. So I believe that this is not the right way for Island Park. I have lived in Island Park 20 years, about 20, 22 years. Came from Newport, right before everybody from out of town started coming. Newport was very quaint and quiet until we had everybody bringing in all the people from outside, and we discovered Island Park. This is a place where still the same as it was when your grandparents used to live here. They are now building something that is for the community. They keep saying that it's something that is going to help us. I don't see the benefit to us, and it's not going to contribute to make this as a peaceful. Voice level, sounds, and then also, who's going to monitor if they're going to be bringing alcohol?
Why the same people monitor it at the beach?
Exactly. And what about the
How much you can do about that?
No. And then what about the trash? Who's going to monitor the trash? There's been a floaty that was left at the corner right across from flows, and it's been there all week. So we don't even have garbage cans. How is it that we're going to control the trash? The people that are going to be monitoring, how are they going to be monitored? I haven't heard how is it that they're going to be taking care of the people coming in and out. Last point. If you had to put a traffic line right outside the entrance of the land to play polo, because they do soccer, and I mean, know that it's a bigger section that you use for the facility, what are you going to do when we have cars parked side to side, and now we have to drive in the middle both ways because we don't have the road? So I hope you consider this, and you do right for the community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was even come up. That was very nice of you.
Sorry for my appearance. We had a wedding on Block Island and still recovering.
Like we're wearing shorts and flip-flops. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I'm still recovering.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Catherine Match. 467 Park Avenue. 53 years, not 20 like him. On my phone, I do have a slight video of some of the traffic proving that they crossed the line, the yellow line, all the way down, not necessary.
I think you probably all experienced it this past Sunday. You know, for the most part. Does anybody really need to see the video? Of the traffic down there? I know you don't. Sure. I think we're kind of
Okay. But we're good on traffic.
It's like
One of my main concerns as a mom, a grandma, and a 12-year PTA member, the safety of the children. What everyone is forgetting to realize, there's three buses in the morning, elementary, middle, and high school, and three buses in the afternoon. These events with strangers, as about 80 to 85% of the people coming to our beach, which is really not a beach, it's private property, are out-of-towners. We're taking chances when our children are out there running around with different people. Now you have people that are going to be there before they go to school, maybe not high school. There might be sex offenders, there might be someone that's drunk and causes issues with some of these young children. And as somebody spoke over here, there are not a lot of children playing out anymore. I don't understand it, riding their bikes like they used to. So over the last few years, that has stopped. You don't see a lot of the children out anymore. They have a special bike event coming, so maybe that'll bring people out again. I don't know. But I am totally opposed to it. I think the traffic is obviously going to be bad. I think it's going to bring in people that we might not want to be brought in. As my husband said, we do environmental cleanup. We did stop cleaning Island Park for a while to see how bad it is, and it is disgusting. Teddy's Beach, we stopped to see what happens, and it is disgusting. So I don't know what it's going to do with taking carry-on carry-out. The reason we don't have trash cans no more on, on some of the public areas is because people were putting their personal litter
Well, it's the state.
From the, yeah.
It's a state road.
Right.
The state doesn't want to maintain.
Yeah, exactly. So that's my, one of my fears is the children with the activities or drunk people around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next? No one else? I'm good with it. Line up.
Hi, folks. My name, oh, yeah, this
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Carr, and I am not a Portsmouth resident, from Newport, Rhode Island, 11 Thurston Avenue. And I, I can't speak to Island Park, and I can't speak to Portsmouth, but what I can speak to is volleyball. So I am part of an organization that has about 600 to 1,200 volleyball players come through it every single season. And I can speak to a lot of the concerns that some of the people have here with regards to volleyball players and who we are and how we kind of operate, and how I surmise that we would operate if we did choose to use AP Enterprises. First and foremost, the volleyball community is made up of adults typically with full-time jobs. So the chances of us showing up at 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m. to play some volleyball is going to be very difficult for us. We knew, we usually operate under a league's base schedule. So we would be one of those organizations that does potentially fill up all 104 potential player spots, but that's an organized event. And we normally have a planned arrival times and planned departure times, and those departure times are not all one single event. It does not happen instantaneously. So our leagues are operated through our organization. And we have our own volunteers that support the control of those players and the efficacy of their performance as individuals as they are at those events. So that is not to count the AP Enterprises employees that would be there and present at the same time. So I would like to identify that as a potential opportunity to how one of the larger evening events would happen. This normally occurs somewhere between 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., when the adults are able to leave their jobs and come and play with us. And we normally go out afterwards and enjoy local community food and stuff like that, which would be an opportunity for Portsmouth businesses as well. From a noise perspective, at least for me, I play volleyball throughout the community about five to seven days a week. And I can talk to how much noise that you would see from volleyball players. And I play in the semi-professional division. And normally, the way we operate is, we actually don't want you to know what we're up to. So we're actually speaking very softly because we're to our partners. We don't want the other team to know what we're up to. And we normally use hand signals to communicate. There are opportunities, I will not say that we are not out there cheering or jeering at opportunities or excited, and we get loud. But we are not a loud community of volleyball players. We are a family-oriented group of folks. Somebody was mentioning that they don't see children out playing around in Portsmouth anymore. That, that is something that is very disheartening to me. And I know I don't live here, but what I can speak to is lots of children are playing volleyball. We had folks come and play with their seven-year-old daughters and 11-year-old daughters at our tournaments recently, which was awesome to see, and it could be something that you could see also at this facility occurring. I can speak to tournaments as well, which would be another large-scale organization event that could happen at AP Enterprises' location here. Those normally are organized very early in the morning arrivals, which should, is usually before the beach traffic, which I can speak to because I'm at the beach at 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. most days, and trust me, we're the only ones there. And those tournaments normally let out at a very regimented schedule. So not all players leave at the same time. If you're knocked out of the tournament, you leave at a, at your respective time at which you were knocked out of the tournament. So it is not an instantaneous flow. And I can speak to the trash, us volleyball players. Uh, us volleyball players, at least in our community, we love the locations that we play at. Typically, we're playing at a beach. Um, and we have very controlled mech, uh, groups that make sure trash is taken care of, um, by, uh, the individual players, and if those players don't take care of it themselves, it's the individuals that were directing the league that was performing at that night that it's their responsibility to take care of the rest of the traffic that wasn't trash, that wasn't taken care of. Um, I can also speak to, uh, the amount of, uh, employees that are needed to support monitoring thirteen nets. Uh, I have been a part of over one hundred different volleyball tournaments that were held here, uh, on Equidnic Island. Um, and normally those events take a small handful of volunteers to start, and they operate on their own, uh, otherwise until the evening. Uh, and two individuals are, uh, a perfectly decent amount to operate across thirteen nets from my experience. Um, obviously, I'm not standing here as an expert in volleyball, uh, but, um, I have helped, uh, and have run, uh, those tournaments myself as well. Um, and, uh, the, the last item I can speak to is, uh, traffic. Uh, from a traffic perspective, uh, I, whether or not the eighty is correct or if a hundred is correct or a hundred twenty is correct, and all the rules associated with that, I completely understand. I did drive here today, uh-huh, and I did see all the traffic that was coming in and out, so I do agree that there is quite a bit of traffic. Um, uh, but also just an understanding, a hundred and tw- I just, uh, being at that in and around, uh, Portsmouth here today, a hundred and twenty cars probably goes by in one minute. Um, so if a hundred and twenty cars are going by in one minute, a hundred and twenty more extra cars coming in, at least in my viewpoint, as not someone who lives in this community, that does not seem like a gigantic increase in impact. And like I said, I don't live in Island Park, and I understand all of the residents' concerns, and I think their concerns, uh, in many ways should be addressed. Um, but I can only speak to what I can state today, and those are, uh, most of them. I did want to say that, um, we were referred to recently as, we volleyball players were referred to as idiots, and we were referred to as strangers, uh, but I do want to remind everybody that, uh, just as much as the Island Park community is a community of families, uh, so is the volleyball community that would love to come and join in that area and play volleyball. Uh, we have families. We bring those families. We all laugh together and have fun and play volleyball together, and that's what you would see at that park when it's happening, is people having fun. We are not idiots. We're not strangers. We're not people with, uh, ill intent coming to play volleyball. We are there to enjoy the sport, to grow our community, and, um, have fun. And that is what I believe is the mission of this, uh, business that was, uh, questioned earlier. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Castleman, you already spoke. That's it. We're done for the night, so, um, Can I show, uh, can I have a show of hands? How many more are going, gonna want to speak to this? Okay. All right, so, um, what's the board's pleasure? Our regular meeting is, next regular meeting's October nineteenth. I'm suggesting the fifth.
It works.
Okay, Sue? Okay.
October fifth, would you do it?
October fifth, October fifth, good for you. Okay, let me just check with these two. October fifth? Kevin, how are you on October fifth? Pretty, pretty clear calendar? Good. All right, um, could I have a motion to continue the petition of AP Enterprises to a special meeting to be held October fifth? Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, folks, again, for your cooperation. Greatly appreciated.